...we have not only in this county, but around this entire country that we love. Would ask that you be with those less fortunate than ourselves, that you especially be with those that put themselves in harm's way to protect our many freedoms and be with our first responders that do more than any of us will ever know. We pray these things in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, the next item is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on September 25th, 2023.
I'm allowed to approve the minutes of the meeting held on September 25th, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second meeting schedule. During the nuns, roll call please.
Please.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is to consider the following: First, claims and prager receipts.
Mr. Chairman, I think most would approve the claims of the prager receipts as presented.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Wayne.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2023 audit letter concerning litigation, unasserted claims, and assessments. The row in front of me addresses the new county attorney. You... Or the deputy county attorney wishes to comment on it.
This is part of our annual audit process, where I make a report after the state audit office, any large claimings that is filed in this county. Large claims that are basically materially intact, presentation of our finances, things that are just... Offshoots, ship finishes, things like that.
Okay, so I assume that there was nothing overdue to report then?
Well, you signed the letter asking me to do it, and I said before.
Okay, sounds great. Callings.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, authorizing the 2023 audit letter concerning litigation on asserted claims and assessments.
Certainly. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Aye.
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 Okay, the next item is the adoption of resolution number 2023-24 authorizing foreclosure and sale of BE tax sales certificates and directing the county attorney to commence foreclosure.
I'm a little busy today, I won't agree. This is the annual resolution that basically tells the county's office, forego on tax sales, because the county got done with. It's on page two this year. It's going to change in the future years based on the change. If you don't sign the resolution today, don't bother coming to the meeting next week.
That sounds...
It's that serious. It's the state law, it's like no serious.
Sounds like we're all good.
Sounds more considered, a good thing.
Yeah, I think we need to move it from office. Yes, if you don't pass the resolution, then chairman, during this meeting, maybe it's actually not, it's not, it's reported with your office.
On that note...
Very common. Yes. Was that this one? On that note, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt resolution number 2023-24 authorizing foreclosure and sale of BE tax sales certificates and directing the county attorney to commence foreclosure.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Tyler, will we see these said tax certificates before they are processed?
Natural causes.
Yes.
Probably not. Although I think it's probably not very interesting.
Is there very little of whatever?
One year, I think I had five, and now I have two.
Two.
These are properties that don't sell the tax sale for a whole year. Particularly not, particularly for the properties.
I would like to see them before we sign.
We give a list of those, let's figure it out before that's what passed.
Last question.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Aye. Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is authorizing the inland port authority committee... Hold, 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 just let me get this signed. Excuse me. Okay. Next item on our agenda is authorizing the inland port authority committee to engage in initial conversations with Central Nebraska Development District and other potential stakeholders regarding federal grant opportunities for funding potential old, modal, rail, and road infrastructure projects in Lincoln County.
Mr. Chairman, I ask for this to be based on the agenda. Commissioner Wayne and I have had several conversations, really got started in earnest on this back during the transportation supposing with the State Department of Transportation Helen Carney. They've dealt specifically with federal grant opportunities concerning the construction of jobs act, discretionary funding that's there. We have had, Commissioner Wayne and I have had conversations with a couple stakeholders prior to that, including our congressional delegation regarding these discretionary funds and how they are appropriate for the moving ports and tapping into some of the financial resources that have been allocated from the federal government to help with the infrastructure needs, linking both rail and our roads, infrastructure, our network, really have Highway 80 and Highway 30, in a cohesive manner to facilitate truck traffic and the shipment of goods to and from our area. So engaged in just a casual conversation with West Central Nebraska Development District, which Commissioner Bluder and I sit on, they are willing to help us carrying the ball on this, but it's going to require numerous conversations with stakeholders such as our District 6, Highway District, particularly Gary Fair. There's going to be some conversations that are engineering, we'll bring in our highway superintendent, we'll bring in members of the actual port authority. But really, what does a potential project we're fighting for connecting this infrastructure, does it include a west interchange for North Platte? Ideally, the goal is to mitigate the vast amount of truck traffic that we anticipate from traversing through the village of Hershey and through the city of North Platte, and how do we do that in an appropriate manner, and how can we tap into this funding to get that done? So that's what I'm asking is for the authorization of the committee, in the port committee, which is comprised of both Kent and myself, since we've really got the ball rolling on this conversation, continue that conversation in a more formal manner with West Central and the other stakeholders to formulate an idea of potential projects and potentially put together an application that can come forward to this board of consideration and applying for those funds. So this is very early on in this process, but I think it's something that we absolutely need to consider. Chairman, I had, last Monday's meeting of the force, those folks, Karen Doob and others, recognized they felt there were the need for a seamless effort, and they formally recognized a partnership with that as well, so that because Tyler will be of the essence when these funds are applied for, we certainly don't want to have to stop and break down the collaborative partner. So he can be a continued day one, so that's the emphasis, and that's the recommendation the force has as well. I'll be on board for that.
I appreciate the work that the inland port authority committee has done. Here's a road project, I know what the title of this question is going to be, but should they kind of look to maybe on that task force as well?
I would think that because we would be talking directly with the state, and this would likely be a state highway infrastructure project that really may be referred to as county roads, as you know, we would want them involved in that conversation. We're talking about a new highway lane that would link potentially a Highway 30 and the interstate, and where we already had that conversation. I'm welcome to this dialogue absolutely on who would be appropriate to be part of this conversation.
I would like to say, Commissioner Burns, I absolutely support applying for federal grant funds. I also support using West Central Development District, as you know, they, in my opinion, are the area experts on going after the grant funding. I really don't know if I have enough information about the project. The first I was aware of this is when we received the letter on Thursday, you know, from the executive director of West Central. I've been on that board and been active there for a while, and I realize big grant funding projects like this require additional fees above and beyond what we would receive, you know, as their membership dues paying members. And so I would like more information on what the project is, if there's partners, and then what that finance looks like for funding, who's taking the lead, and then shared responsibility, which also would share the expense of hiring West Central to do this.
Right, and so at this point, we don't know what that overall project looks like. It's literally, we're asking for permission to have a brainstorming meeting, engage with West Central. As members of West Central, yes, there is some hourly fees associated with their consulting. It's fairly nominal, given the grand scope of what we may be trying to accomplish at this point, we don't know what we're trying to accomplish. We don't know what is an easy project that can be applied for these larger funds. As time progresses and we wrap our arms around a potential large scale infrastructure project, those fees will likely grow in size. We're just looking for permission to engage in that conversation initially.
Two concerns. First concern has to do with the way it was promoted as agenda. I read the letters, I understand it was from you, Tyler, that it had to go on. I don't know. For any people who put things on the agenda, I think my statute, our numbers of the board, that's our table. You can request, and let's approve by the chairman or something, but we don't put them on. And the other thing I appreciate is that you put on it as a consent item because you were sure we were all just agreeing. I disagree with that. Consent agenda items, Mr. Burns, Mr. Wolfner, as we all know, approving agenda, you know what consent agenda items are. The routine things that we do every week, make most of the proof, the claim, this is not a consent agenda. It's something that concerns some discretion, and it's not an everyday occurrence. It's something that came up one time. That bothers me.
So to your point about...
First of all, there's nothing we wouldn't be entitled to, consent agendas. Second. Then is that your wording, was consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, then if there's nothing in there, don't be using it. We don't agree with it. Second, well, it's Wolfner, not Wolfner. Third, you don't put anything on your agenda on the board? I don't know.
To that point...
Let me address that, please, please.
It was clear to the chairman. It was clear to the chairman.
Let me address this, please. There is no such thing as consent agenda.
Those words do not appear in the open meetings act.
I didn't say that. Is there anything that's a consent agenda? There's a set of things that are in the open meetings act. There's rules, there's rovers, there's all kinds of things. There's a lot of people that use consent agendas. The Open Meetings Act is not the only thing this board can fight with.
Joe, if you'd like to have legal order with me, why don't we do it not in front of those people to make sure that...
Mr. Wolfner, I merely ask that we not do it that badly again.
Again, it's full murder, not murder.
It's Wolfner.
Murder.
Wolfner.
You've been open for four years, Joe, it's full murder.
Yes, I will do it again, I promise. Thank you very much.
Joe, to your concern about it just being based on the open agenda, I had permission from the chairman before we actually went and had Tyler add this to the agenda. So the chairman did authorize this to be on, so there was that conversation as far as where, if it was based on item number three or after our board utilization, I think that's an material we're having dialogue. We're still discussing it, and we are still considering it.
Okay. I was surprised that this was being discussed, and I do realize that there's not enough information available, so my suggestion is to be able to, and don't mention it, we can have more information presented as far as what the initial claims are and that sort of thing.
That's just that there are no initial claims.
Mr. Chairman, my specific request would be, and Mr. Burns, is that we know what kind of this will cost. When I read the letter from Amber Feskey, I assume nobody had talked to anybody, because you asked permission to have come out here to talk to them. And when we got a letter from the Amber Feskey that you already had, that's what got me a little bit upset, because obviously something happened that not quite the way we're reading it.
So to give some background to that letter, I appreciate Amber Feskey's just phenomenal work for West Central Development District. I believe, I believe that the gun may have jumped a little bit in that regard. The only conversation that I had was a phone conversation with Amber last week, asking if we pursued the conversation, if it would be a part of that conversation. There's been no formal agreement, no conversations to what that would look like in park or in hole. It's merely, and we don't have it, we don't have information on what this would look like. I'm merely asking permission, for permission to engage in a conversation with them, because I want this to be fully transparent to the board and to the public of what you're doing.
Okay, Chris, can you clarify, were there a specific list of people that were invited to the initial meeting?
I brainstormed with Amber on discussion. Literally, it was an initial conversation on if we had to, if we were to have a roundtable planning meeting. She asked who would be appropriate to be a part of that, and I said, well, probably somebody from District 6, because it's a state highway infrastructure project. We were want members of our board, probably the inland port authority, and because this is concerning inland port and that north development, maybe here. She asked if somebody from the village of Hershey would be... Literally extended the conversation, and this has not been finalized, there's been no calendar invite, it's not out.
I understand, but that's my point. Go ahead, go ahead, Lord, for just a conversation, we'd be willing to do it. So I mean, that's all I was trying to say.
Okay.
Do you have a question? Do you have...
Thanks, I mean, I can just, if I have a report, whenever you can have it, it does bother me. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, my suggestion is, is maybe invite Amber to come in next week, and we have this stuff, a report to the committee as to what is in the works.
We can put something together as far as what we would like to propose, but I don't see it being much different than what I just laid out right here. But I'm willing to do that.
Let's do it. Mr. Chairman, I ask if we could, some kind of preliminary estimate from West Central to kind of cause, thinking that would be more important to me and even the people who are on there.
So do I have permission to engage with West Central and Nebraska Development District to find out that information?
The cost.
That is ultimately what I am asking for here.
The cost.
The cost.
And we're not looking at the...
Sure, I would see it from every visitor.
Yes, I think it'd be great, can we have Amber come on?
I would welcome that.
Okay, let's do that. Okay, table that until next, there are weeks, and Becky, you and I will get together on that agenda. Thank you. Okay, it is 9:22. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. First item on this agenda is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on September 25th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I approve the meeting minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on September 25th, 2023.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Moore.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye. Next item is certificates of correction and refund that's submitted by the county assessor.
There aren't any.
I have a verbal message from county assessor Julie Stinger, that there aren't any. We appreciate that, thank you, ma'am. Is there any other business to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? Becky, you have anything on the report as you were?
No, I did really, like, speak out loud before this, but I haven't realized, in fact, you know this, but...
We probably better start it on that side, since that's...
Okay, there is no other business, so at 9:24, we will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners.
I'd like to send it through to the people that want to sign it out, also they want to board, but I didn't sign it out.
So first, some information on the path of this, I think, transportation issue. That's Tyler's final question.
Tyler, I would look for Tyler. I would guess that there's somebody in there that has that particular belief, and we are unable to comment.
So a few questions to ask by that department might be good, yeah?
I would.
Tyler, I would like to apologize, totally for my mispronouncing the name, like, I probably mispronounced it since I know it. So I do apologize, and thank you for that. No problem. That's all.
It is 9:30. Our next agenda item is to discuss and consider authorizing the chairman to sign the staff special traffic enforcement program application to the end dot highway safety office for the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office. Sir, take your name, please.
Corporal Porter, with the sheriff's office. You guys are mostly familiar with why I'm here, since we've been doing it for a number of years, with the state has thrown a change up on me this year. So instead of applying seven or eight times a year for grant funding provided by the state, they are now asking the agencies to apply once a year for the entire amount of funds that we would like to use throughout the year. So the requirements are, we fill this out, I believe it's going to be October, every October, we will apply for whatever funds we think we can use throughout the entire fiscal year for the funding. So there are some requirements, which I believe that that back sheet I made was monthly. They require the sheriff's office or whoever has the funds to do something at least They require the sheriff's office or whoever has the funds to do something at least once a month in regards to highway safety. This is what I came up with. It it could be right, they could correct me on some things I've never done before, so I'm not sure exactly what they want. But we have school safety programs listed. They told us as long as we go into schools and give driver safety in regards to victory, alcohol, seatbelts, or speeding, that would count as a monthly requirement for their program. That that doesn't necessarily mean we need to spend any of the funds to do that. It's just every month we have to have something showing we're trying to educate on the the three major causes of fatal accidents, which would be those two things, occupant, protection, speeding, and alcohol. So I filled this out at the state again, they might tweak it, but basically this year, based on what our budget is now, because since we've already kind of gone into some part budget for our fiscal year compared to what their fiscal year is, I'm asking this year for forty thousand dollars to get us through until next October. And that'll be spread out for the normal grants we work, the normal overtime enforcement grants we work. We we are required to do three of their four big federal ones. I believe one's in May, one's in August, and either the one in November or December. We have to do at least three of those four regarding the funds. But it's essentially the same as what we did. I just would not have to come and see you guys, or lieutenant would have to come see you eight times a year to apply for the funds, it will already happen. So once they approve this fund, this is what we have to spend until next October. And the forties, on average, I I looked through the past three years, we usually do seventy-two to seventy-five thousand grant funding per year. But this again is low because we've already spent some of our budget funds for, I think, July and August, we've already had a couple of grants. So next October, this asking will probably be a little bit higher, but it'll be within our budget, what we have set at the Sheriff's Office, which I think is seventy-five thousand to participate in overtime grants.
So you said that there was a creating potential federal program?
That we have to, yes.
Would those be extra funds of this?
No, no, it's um what we get from this application is what we have. We have to use these funds for those three grants as well as any others we'd like to participate. So but I don't have to spend a certain amount on the grants, I can try to spread the money out. Oh, I've got to spread the money out because once we use this, we can't apply for any more funds until next October. But they require us to work at least those three federal grants. Because I believe seventy percent of the state's money comes from the federal government, which is why they're requiring us to participate in federal grants, just so they can show that the money the federal is sending to the state is being used for part of their programs.
Okay, sounds good, sir. So this means that we won't get to leave the debt and kind of ban for the office?
Well, I mean, he might come see you for other things, but I don't think he's going to ask for what we're doing.
I like the idea of stringlining and reducing, it sounds like that's the intent, to streamline and reduce the number of comments, so you can focus on more important issues. So I I think it's a great idea, the amount is better.
And this actually seems a lot better because we have to do like school safety programs, we don't have to focus. But now we've more of the schools and teenage drivers, hot drivers, so it may be more to try, it it prevents everything. So it's uh it will definitely.
Do you need a motion? Mr. Chairman. I make a motion authorizing our chairman who signed the staff special traffic enforcement program application to the Nebraska Department of Transportation Highway Safety Office for the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Lord. Hi, Queens. Queens.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Aye. Now you can. That's why I said. Yes.
Thank you.
Here, would you like to fire up yourself for that to hear your voice, please?
Okay, it is nine forty. Our next agenda item is to discuss and consider setting a date to accept bids for two new three-quarter ton four-wheel drive Lincoln County Department of Roads.
Morning.
Morning.
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, sir. Jason, what do you know, we're gonna say?
Oh, no, we're good. Thank you, Joe. Uh, so yeah, I requested to have this placed on the agenda to inland with our approved budget and our truck upgrade program, so this is the setting a date for two pickups, three-quarter ton, four-wheel drive, four-door pickups. And like to request the date of October twenty-third.
October twenty-three, is your request?
Yep.
And it is. Does it work for you?
It does, completely okay.
Okay, and uh the location will be put out, press one?
Yep.
Jason, just to clarify, um, these are vehicles that are in our rotation that we have set up. You will have vehicles that you trade in, unused, or these are acquired without trade?
These will be acquired without trade. Yeah, we don't have any provisions for a trade.
And if I remember us going through a budget, they are worked into a budget?
Yep, correct.
Okay. What time would work for you, Becky?
Ten AM, sure.
Ten AM? How was it? Remember to set up for like ten AM to receive and consider this for two new three-quarter ton four-wheel drive, I guess. Lincoln County Department of Roads.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Queens.
Aye.
Lord. Hi, Queens. Brent.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay, it is nine forty-five. Our next agenda item is to discuss and consider allowing the county surplus personal property in the Lincoln County Department of Roads to be surplus, surplus property, which is obsolete or unusable by the county.
Hi, yeah, Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. Uh, so this is just a add three more items to the list that we declared surplus for last week. Uh, so you guys should have a copy of that, they're highlighted in the green envelope. So it's a couple of old dump truck cabin chassis. They're definitely not usable. And then another generator unit that is, there's no inventory record for, but it's not usable.
Okay. So this is an addition to the thirteen items that you brought up last week, correct?
Correct.
Jason, do we have a target date yet for the dispersal design?
Um, we don't. I'm actually meeting with the auctioneer on Wednesday, and we'll go through this whole list, and then we should have some better dates for you next week.
Thank you, Collins.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve declaring the county surplus personal property in the Lincoln County Department of Roads to be surplus property, which is obsolete or unusable by the county, adding the three mentioned items to the list of the existing thirteen items.
Very. Sir. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Lord. Hi, Queens.
Aye.
Queens. Brent.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Okay. Follow-up item on this agenda is to discuss and consider authorizing the sale of the surplus personal property, which are obsolete or unusable by the county by means or ways allowed under the basket revised statute twenty-three dash three-one-one-five.
Chairman, we're going to authorize the sale of surplus personal property, which are obsolete or unusable by the county by means and ways allowed under Nebraska revised statute twenty-three dash thirty-one fifteen.
Sir. We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Jason, are we saying that this is the same manner that you're planning to? Yes, yeah, we're planning on using, yep.
And what was that you were going to list those online, that, sir?
Yeah, with the big iron options.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Brent.
Aye.
Queens. Aye. Queens.
Aye.
Lord. Hi, Woodruff.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. It is nine fifty. Our next agenda item is to discuss and consider any time on the agenda for committee reports. I put this on the agenda, the Rules Committee met and had a discussion in regards to many of the activities that some committees are kicking, and uh those conversations have been helpful and been very meaningful, but it's not a very designated time where we would set up an opportunity to discuss committee activities would be a good agenda to go forward. I welcome other folks' thoughts and effort, Charlie.
I think it's a great idea, Mr. Chairman, I know if you have circumstances, maybe there's special player committees that you have, then we have a time set aside where you put a variety of agenda where I can open it. Committees can give that data to maybe further that. I I really welcome it, it's a great idea.
I I echo that.
Well, we have several committees that we serve on and uh. Well, we have several committees that we serve on and, uh, I think it's not readily known to probably what all those committees are and the actual work that is done by all of your members of this board. But I think it would be good that we had structured kind of opportunity to deep progress of whether it's road to the activities, or whether it's, uh, or whether it's any other particular activity. So, uh, Becky, when would be a good time to put that on if we should sort of decide? And maybe says there's nothing to report. But I think it would be nice to have that opportunity, so you're probably running at nine-thirty or just before we.
I think it would probably be more appropriate because we don't know how long any of those individual reports can go. We do a lot of work in our standing committees. Uh, if there's a large issue that we're working on, I'd probably think, I think it takes some time and I'd be wary about putting it time certain time on the agenda, so I may have a limitation, so you have to write up your concerns to the Department of Defense or. Write that down, let's discuss that, we better sign the claims traditionally.
Mr. Chairman, I agree, I think it's a great idea, it will help keep us all informed, like sometimes we get so busy and working on projects that we fail to share. And I think it's also good for the public to hear the different communities we serve on and the projects that we have in the works. So I think it's a great idea, I support it.
As a reminder, we welcome a.
Chairman, I think the motion that, we had a time, the director by official rose at the end of agenda following, uh. Okay, your concerns, uh, related officials for the department's desk.
Good job.
Agree. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Go call, please.
Q. Wink?
Aye.
Lord?
Aye.
Wiens?
Aye.
Friends?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Okay, it is ten AM. Our next agenda items involve some planning commission items. I will be turning the vote steering over to Deputy County Attorney Carter Hopemer here shortly. But a few opening comments. I would ask that everyone that wishes to speak. Thank you. In case I wasn't loud enough before. I would ask that everyone that wishes to speak this morning, or this afternoon in this case, and we, that you be as courteous and kind to folks of different opinions than yours as you would ever be of yours. I would ask that of you, and if you cannot, Sheriff Jerome Kramer has provided officers to help make sure that's the case. Uh, first, I would like to have Judy Clark, the City and County Planning Administrator, come to vote.
Judy Clark, County Planning Administrator. So are we doing the solar one first? Okay.
We are.
So you should have all received a copy of the review comments and attached to that, and hopefully you got it in red. Um, listed in red are the proposed amendments to the solar regulations. Um, in our solar regulations, we didn't have a lot of regulations on solar farms or commercial solar farms. And the biggest thing that came out of Planning Commission was they wanted a way of if these solar panels, if these solar farms discontinue use, discontinue being productive, a way of clearing that land and putting it back to how it was, so decommissioning. So the biggest change in this one is just adding a decommissioning plan, so that if the solar farm happens to discontinue use, all of that would be the responsibility of that individual to make sure that the land was cleared and go back to its original state. Um, so on July eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, Lincoln County Planning Commission unanimously approved and passed a resolution recommending approval of the amendment. So you should have a copy of their signed resolution. And planning staff has no objection to the amendment to the Lincoln County zoning regulations, Article eighty, sections eight point one-two through eight point one-two oh-six solar energy. If you have any questions, I would be happy to try to answer those.
Are there any questions from this board for Judy Clark? Or do you have a question on setbacks currently that are concerned with other structures?
Yes, so with that one, we didn't focus a lot on setbacks, just because there didn't appear to be a large detriment. These would come back to you, if a single project was proposed, it would come back to you as a conditional use permit, at which time you would have the ability to deny, approve, or approve with conditions. Um, the setbacks for these, they are allowed in a transitional ag district or an agricultural district, so a TA one or an A one by conditional use only, which again, you would have the right to put any conditions on that. And the setbacks for these wind farms are commensurate with the zoning jurisdiction that they're in. So whatever setback is there, what was that?
Solar farms.
Solar farms, yeah. So whatever setback is in the A one district for structures, whatever setback is in the TA one district for structures, is what their setbacks would be.
Okay. Any other questions for Judy Clark from this board? Okay, I'll turn them.
I think, I'm delayed here. Can you explain to me, Judy, when it comes to solar farm development, is there like a required amount of acres? Uh, or can you put on any amount of acres as long as it falls in those two categories?
Yes, we did not limit the number of acres, so an agricultural A one district should be at least ten or more acres. Um, a TA one should be at least three or more acres. Um, but a solar farm on three acres probably isn't gonna work a lot.
Maybe for personal owners?
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions, David?
Yeah, I do have a question. Uh, so if you have a particular solar array project, my understanding is typically require multiple parcels with multiple landowners associated. Is that one conditional land use permit application comes through the aggregate project? Or does each property come through the process for a conditional?
So we have had some discussions with somebody who's, and it's been several years that we've been in discussions with somebody that's, um, looking at doing this, and I need to back up once because it is allowed in an industrial district also. So, sorry, I apologize for that. Um, but it would be the aggregate altogether. Now, I'll get into the other with the other, the next agenda item. But with the solar ones, they would just be all one project, like an aggregate project, even if there's multiple, um, owners. But each of those multiple owners would have to sign that application.
And so, um, landowners of all size, as long as their properties line up, would be able to participate if they choose? What happens if one person in the middle chooses not to participate?
They go around them, so basically the project that we've been kind of discussing, um, for the last couple of years, um, you'll see a section here, a section here, a section down here, it would skip this section. So, um, as long as they can get in, and, sorry, I am not an electrical person, I know nothing about how they get all those things to hook up, but as long as they can hook them up, um, they can be neighboring a budding property owner.
So it doesn't?
Now, to have, to have one that's here and then one that's clear over here that's the same project, those would be treated separately because they're not even close together. But if it abuts, you know, something like that, it would be an aggregate project because it's all gonna feed into the same electrical system.
So what recourse to segue off of Commissioner Boulah's question, what recourse does landowner have if they find maybe they have a small acreage? What recourse do they have if a project goes in that encompasses surrounding property around their, their parcel?
Well, I would highly recommend that they show up at the condition, at the conditional use public hearing and voice their opinion. Um, they really, I would have to defer to Tyler on that because if you guys make the choice and this one person is surrounded by this, I don't know that they have much that they could do, other than really voice their opinion and, you know, maybe work with the, uh, commercial solar farm person to see if they wouldn't take theirs also. But yeah, I don't know that they have much of a recourse according to these regulations anyway.
So just for foundational reference, that's the reason why we consider, uh, particular setbacks, particularly when it comes to setbacks from dwellings?
Uh-huh, yes, that is correct. And with this one, Planning Commission really did get into those setbacks from dwellings because there's not a noise factor. Um, there's not really a nuisance factor other than appearance.
So just to reiterate, there's no specified number of acres required to participate in a solar farm development? So if a person in the middle who's being surrounded by a solar farm, has issue with it, that there's, other than voicing their opinion, there's no recourse?
Not that I am aware of, but again, I would have to defer to the attorney.
And so then there would be no need, if I, if I'm understanding correctly, since there's no required number of acres, anybody of any size could participate, um, without getting a waiver because they don't have a certain amount of land?
Yes, so there's not, there's not a minimum requirement of the piece of land to do solar. Um, for example, we have a gentleman south of North Clad that has, I don't know, maybe six, eight panels for personal use. And he's on a, I don't know, maybe an eighth and a half.
So the landowner has the right to be towing his property changes?
Yes.
Okay, is that for personal use?
Yeah, there's a difference between a commercial solar farm and a personal solar generating, and that is.
And what you were talking about would be personal.
I think what she's talking about is if, if someone wants to have their property used as part of the solar farm, there's no limit on size. If they only had a two-acre lot out there in the middle and they wanted to say, hey, take mine as part of the commercial project, that would be fine.
Judy, did the planning commission discuss any setbacks that they would like to see in regards to solar array?
Um, again, there wasn't a lot of discussion on increasing the setbacks, they felt that the setbacks that.
Increasing the setbacks, what other part of the setbacks?
Uh, the setbacks are particular to that zoning district as they would be for a building. So for example, in an agricultural district, if you were putting up a building, you would have to have a, I believe it's forty-foot front yard setback, um, twenty-five-foot rear yard setback, and I believe it's fifteen on the sides. So they could not start construction of that solar panel until they were back far enough. Um, a TA one has different setbacks, an industrial has a different setbacks. But they just stayed with the setbacks that are in that district for the solar panels.
But those primarily deal with property lines, right?
Property lines, yes, yes. It goes from your property line. It goes from your property line to your structure.
Are there any counties that you're aware of that have setbacks for solar arrays from dwellings?
Not off the top of my head, I would have to look.
Tyler, for Judy, but there's probably some folks that said they live on next to their house. So is there any recourse to add through the process of applying the particular property or, yeah, and having any weight?
I'm going to defer that to Tyler.
Short answer is, you know, really, if a project has setbacks, I think the board has the huge ability to deny the conditional use based on setbacks.
Any other questions for Judy Park from this board? At this time, I ask for a conservative. Okay, so at this time, I will, it is 10:12, I will turn this over to, I will open the public hearing and turn it over to, if they can, I'm turning Tyler's full time.
Okay, I don't normally run these hearings, but Chairman asked me to do so, so he can sit and listen and take and, regardless of how you worry about the ministry on applying law. So just a quick show ahead, who plans to speak as it's solar?
I have a word, so for any way I can speak first, I know I'm not more important than anybody here, but I do have to have words to say.
Another point, let me run a couple things with you. If you miss one, because there's a number of people want to speak, and we have another area where a lot of people want to speak, we're going to keep initial comments to five minutes. I have a device to type in with, I will let you know when your timer's up. If you have prepared materials, we're going to allow 10 minutes for that, so you can go more or less, again, I will let you know when your timer's up. Please keep your commentary family friendly, if you're a small child in the audience, if you can't keep that, I don't know what the deputy is working about. And with that, we'll start with ladies in the room.
Thank you.
Oh, and everybody who comes to speak does have to state their name and sign on to the board of workers. That is active by law.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate, and this is a question that they state whether they are a resident of Lincoln County or a landlord of Lincoln County?
I think that's very appropriate.
Thank you. I have a question, if you believe, would you say a chief of residence or a landowner of Lincoln County?
Landowner. Resident, I'm not sure, honestly.
State your name, please.
Lana Klein.
I'm sorry, I'm, Lana, L-A-N-A, Klein, K-L-E-I-N. Thank you, ma'am.
I must find the time starts now.
There is no climate crisis. Meteorologists and scientists say there is no climate crisis, there hasn't been for years, there hasn't really ever been. There is a financial crisis. Despite knowing how quickly solar panels and wind turbines wear out, we are still using millions of tax dollars and continuing to push them. When the wind turbines and solar panels need replaced, usually the company is no longer in business, and the landowners just let them fall or rot down as it is too expensive to remove the 60 foot diameter and nine foot being concrete and haul their back in to make the land usable. We need to get our cities, counties, states, and federal governments back on track, as well as families and schools, and stop giving in to our short term dollar and give future generations a chance to not be owned by China. When, I won't be able to speak this afternoon, I know this is on wind power, wind power fails on every account.
Ma'am, ma'am, this is a solar discussion, public hearing.
I won't be able to speak this afternoon though, because I have to work.
I'm sorry, this is a public hearing for solar only.
Okay, and that goes for solar too, but I hope that we approve the solar for personal use, but not for commercial use. And I would love to speak this afternoon, but if I don't get to, hopefully you'll consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings me to a good point, I will say this is a public hearing for solar only, I only do not want to hear your commentary about them, we cannot, that's not what our agenda. The next person to make their way up, please.
David Ebner, Matthew, Airport Road, Lincoln County, we are landowners, agriculture-based family business. So I want to touch on the policy side here. This client definitely nailed it, it, this is, this is a federal-driven agenda that really doesn't have any place in our conservative red county. I think the jury is still out on what benefits we get from these solar devices. There's definitely evidence, definitely evidence that they, that they're toxic. So are we going to permit a toxic landfill in northern Lincoln County, southern Lincoln County, on Incorp land? When these things fail every five years in a hailstorm? Anybody that's had solar before for a windmill or a gate opener knows that they only last for three to five years. So let's think about that, they're going to be here forever. And, and then on the policy side, these, these are foreign investments on American soil, right? We're in the heartland of the US. That's a federal matter, right? But today it's not, it's, it's, it's an US matter, it's a Lincoln County matter. This is something that we can actually have a say on. If we don't like what we see on the news, we don't like our federal tax monies going to the Biden agenda on these things, especially if they're so iffy, let's say no, let's, and if we're not sure, let's put a five or 10 day moratorium on it until we get better research, better, better findings from how these things turn out. So I'll touch on that a little bit more on the wind side. I do have some experience on the solar side from my time in, my time in, in Texas, I'm a fifth generation citizen in Lincoln County, but I lived in Texas around solar installations for a lot of years, and jobs go to foreign workers that are here on visas, usually the good paying jobs. So if we put an American solar farm in Japan or Germany, we'd have Americans around it, right? So we're not going to get that many good paying jobs. Maintenance is going to be a nightmare, the long-term waste is going to be a nightmare. You know, we're going to have Chinese-made solar panels entering the aquifer for eternity if we allow it, so. Anyway, thank you for holding the hearing, and thank you for the chance to talk about such an important topic.
Hello, I'm Tori Copeland, 612 Hillview Drive, I'm a landowner, a resident lifelong of this community, currently serve on the Southern School Board, previously I served two and a half terms on the Village Board of Southern, so I understand the politics and the ramifications. Recently retired from Nebraska Public Power District, disclaimer. Several things, I think that she alluded to about the recourse for neighboring landowners. If it meets your setbacks, it meets all the rules, there is no denying that permit legally. That's the problem. There are several problems with approving these and the recourse of the neighboring landowners. Currently, I know there's approximately 47,000 acres that are in a lease option for a solar farm south of the power plant in southern Nebraska. First of all, the power plant is a necessity to this area for economic reasons. Second of all, it's a necessity for power reliability, of which solar has no reliability other than on a nice warm sunny day. That being said, the county needs to also consider the ramifications to the infrastructure, to the roads, to maintaining those roads to access these solar farms. They don't have any business on Incorp ground, because that's not why Incorp was purchased. That was purchased for a water farm. And you remember what they told you when they said they would pay taxes? That's a fact. Now, maybe they are now, but at first they weren't. The director, Kent Miller, said Incorp would pay taxes on the Incorp ground. At first, they did not, I do not know if they are. So be careful what you believe. Second of all, one thing you'd also have to consider is access to the solar farm as far as the power and transmission lines and roads. Currently, the private investors will use public entities such as a county or a public power district to obtain eminent domain to service these if the routing does not attach to an existing power line or a road. So if you grant a permit for a solar farm, and we won't mention the other farms, what we'll talk about later, and they don't have access to get the power to a transmission line, and they don't own the property to the private transmission line, the county or the public power district will and can condemn a strip of ground to get the public, to get that line to the transmission line across someone like me, of which I have no benefit other than heartache. They can come in and tear down, and force you for that transmission line to service their private property across my private property, tear down those trees that my great-granddad planted back in the early 1900s, because you can't have trees under these transmission lines for American FERC regulations. Also, you might not be able to pay a pile of your hay bales, only one tall, if that's where that transmission line is going to go before I'm piling three hog. So there's several things you have to understand about the transmission lines servicing these new farms, the road servicing these farms, the county has struggles to maintain their existing roads at current traffic. Now, once the solar farmer, the wind farmer is done, the traffic will be minimal, I understand that during construction, it will be excessive. Can you keep that up? For instance, the road that they dug up to, for the Incorp to service the water line to the Platte River and to the other places was on the county right of way. If you drive out there, it is no longer that great of a road in places. So no matter how they put it back, it doesn't stay that way. Now, who's on the hook to keep repairing that? The taxpayers, and you guys have to deal with that. So, and do you know what grows underneath of a solar farm? Currently, if you put a solar farm in, it's over pasture ground, that grass does not continue to grow like it used to. Look at the carbon footprint impact there. And then if the ground dies, you know how the ground is around here, sandy loam, sand hills? What about the runoff onto that neighboring property? What about the repercussions there? They have nothing they can do. Are they going to fight and sue the solar companies? No, are they going to come in here? I mean, they can, they will lose because they'll run out of money. You don't have to win a loss of value, all you got to do is run the clock till the other opponent runs out of money, I know. So that runs off onto your county roads, are you going to be forced to sue that company because of the excessive runoff? One minute? Okay, was it five minutes? Is that what it is? Okay. Also, so if you have to approve it because of the rules and regulations, then you're stuck. And as far as decommissioning, you can research the decommission of these for anything, power plants, whatever. If the company's bankrupt and you don't hold a bond, in hand, it is valid. There's no recourse, you're going to sue a bankrupt company or a company that just disappeared. How much will that cost the taxpayers? You guys don't have enough money to go in and after all these people who give and when they are decommissioned. But again, the ramifications of this are huge, it has to be, if you don't have the regulations rights, you're going to have to approve everyone who comes through, if it meets your rules and regulations. And the neighboring property owners have absolutely zero recourse once you guys approve that. And it's just, well, we're sorry, you don't know how bad we feel about it? No, you don't know how bad I feel about it. So just trying to put that stuff out there, this is real world stuff, that it will, it's consequences down the road. So, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, sir.
Follow the rules. My name's Gene Tason from Southern, I'm a landowner. I had 35 years' experience with the utility industries, both nuclear, transmission lines, and fossil. We're talking about commercial solar, I have nothing against solar, there's a place and a time for it. This is commercial solar. Everything he just said, I agree with. I'd like to add something, ask anybody from the solar, it's this question, what's the availability of a solar farm? That's a percentage. Fossil, nuclear, all the central power stations operate at 85 to 90% availability. Solar is only there if the sun's shining. There is no way right now at this time with the technology to save that power for the night. To replace something like Gentlemen or Neb City, you're going to need thousands of acres of solar and some way to store the power. And what's going to happen with economic development? The company's going to come in and build these, it ain't going to be Siemens, it's going to be a company from outside the state. They're going to build it, everything he says is going to happen, and some of them have their offices in Piper Cutts. They're going to disappear because they're fly-by-night outfits. Think about it real hard, because you got to get the power from these things to the transmission lines if you're going to tie to the grid. Thousands of acres of solar farms are going to mean thousands of lives of transmission line that extra are holding. You got to, it's the only way it's getting from here to Kansas or Nebraska or somewhere else. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Melanie Kaufman, I'm from Thomas County. My name, or is spelled M-E-L-A-N-I-E, Kaufman, C-O-F-F, N-A-N.
Yes, I'm excited.
Thank you. I'm a non Lincoln, or non-resident, sorry. I also have a question too, I have my testimony written out, but I also, I combine the wind and the solar in there, would you accept that together if I only speak on the solar now and then come back and address the wind, or how do you, how do you want to handle that? Because I didn't break down individually.
I would request we simply address the solar right now.
And as far as can I, can I hand in my statement, then will you accept it written together?
If you have something you'd like to have more of, it's included in the record, you can certainly make that guess.
Thank you.
If you can bring that forward, I will just stick around for you.
Thank you. Is it okay then?
Yes.
Thank you, Chrissy. Okay. I'm here, I'm here in opposition against the solar energy, but I'm also going to tie the whole high voltage transmission into it, because of course we need transmission lines to produce the product from the solar. So I have two subjects that I'd like to share with you today concerning alternative energy and the Nebraska Public Power District. First off, I'll read from the... First off, I'll read from the facility connection requirements. It's the document, technical requirements for interconnection to the Nebraska Public Power District Transmission System. This is version seven, August 9, 2023, NPPD Energy Delivery System Planning and Transmission Business Transmission Planning. It's from page three. And if you look on the back of my statement, I have like the website that you can go to familiarize yourself with this and perhaps it would help answer some questions there as well. So I'm reading from page three of this document. It's the three general interconnection requirements. All requests for interconnection to NPPD or the Nebraska Public Power District Transmission System must be consistent with the NERC reliability standards, regional reliability requirements, and standard utility practices. A proposed new interconnection for a proposed qualified change to an existing interconnection facility must not degrade the reliability or operating flexibility of the existing transmission line. NPPD considers a qualified change to be any proposed changes to existing facilities that could affect the reliability or operation of the NPPD transmission system. I'll kind of stop there and let you go on if you wish, and I hope that you would, to, you know, finish out the paragraph. And then I'm going to kind of pose some questions to you, questions that need to be addressed and added to setbacks or regulations within your comprehensive plan. What, I'm sorry?
Tammy, I'm a little slow writing. I'll need somebody to take minutes of this so we can have those questions down there.
There, I haven't.
It's too much, isn't it, second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, that's all right. I did kind of put a few in there that I thought of later, but I guess these are the ones that I think are really important. What existing transmission lines will this project tie into? Or will this project acquire new transmission lines altogether? I mean, these are questions that we, you as commissioners, need to think about and we, as residents of Nebraska, and even the county, need to consider and think about. How will this project affect our county's electrical grid concerning reliability? This is something that I didn't put in there. Will eminent domain be used against a non-investor landlord? And the gentleman that was to it had to be really touched on that very well. There is a chance of eminent domain, which the land could be taken through eminent domain. Is this project good for all the residents in your county? How does your county feel about industrial businesses being owned by foreign entities? Because a lot of these companies that are out there have ties with foreign entities. A gentleman or one of the other.
Was it there?
Thank you. And do the solar companies have your county's best interests at heart? U.S. commissioners hold the key to your counties to do what regulations and setbacks that are set forth through your comprehensive plan. You have the power to approve or deny any application that is set forth to you. You have the right and owe your constituents the privilege as how the county is to be zoned. The second subject is the power purchase agreement with NPPD. I would think that as commissioners, you have the right to ask and should require all solar companies to include a power purchase agreement document with Nebraska Public Power and the Southwest Power Pool in your conditional permit. There's no reason for a permit for building these solar. Can I finish my last sentence or complete the sentence? Thank you. There's no way to permit the building of this project if there's no way of collecting or standing power down the line. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor, sir.
You're welcome.
Good morning. I am Landon Fair. I'm a sixth-generation rancher and resident of Lincoln County. And currently, there is over 5,000 acres that I know of that border property that I'm speaking on behalf of for Free Ranch Company. And I would like to say that, they say the grass does not grow very well under solar panels. It all blows away. All that, that's all going to run and blow onto my property. And on the glare, they say these solar farms do not have any glare, but they had a test panel in a weather station on property that I lease. And you could be, just one panel, and I would be driving down the county road when the sun was setting, and if you were heading west, you could hit the glare, and it was a blinding glare. And what are we going to do if there's, you know, sections and sections of panels that glare? And I mean, I would assume that it's the same panel going up for the test panel as it is for the rest of them. And I would also like to mention that they already have contacted me and my family on wanting to buy Eastman's for power lines. I turned them down, and they said they would inform me that we would try to be eminent domained, and I do not want that. And I don't know really of anybody that wants that in Lincoln County. And I mean, we have this big, you know, we're adding power lines. I don't want to see more power lines. I don't want power lines going through my property. I don't want to be eminent domained. It's already happened before with eminent domain on property that we own, and I don't want to see any more of it. And then there's so many repercussions to it. I just do not think this is right for Lincoln County.
Good morning. My name is Rick Wintup. I'm a resident here in Lincoln County. And also to kind of set my credentials, I'm a biologist by degree. I have written columns on recreational, outdoors, nature, and the carmen and stuff for over 30 years for both the papers here in Lincoln County, papers in eastern Nebraska, and contribute to magazines across the country on occasion. I want to talk about the solar aspect, much of which has already been covered. Mr. Copeland and Mr. Tacey did a great job on some of the things they said. As you might understand or might be willing to see, solar power creates a much bigger footprint on the landscape than other alternative energy sources. The shade that we've talked about does take a lot of the ground out of production. But there is also a difference between whether it is flat plate collectors or solar furnaces. Solar furnaces, in my personal opinion, are even more destructive because they shine their beam toward one point in the air, and anything flying through that beam is fricusied right on the spot. That's, I don't think we want that, particularly with the waterfowl and crane migrations we have through the area. Mr. Tacey touched on the fact that there is no current technology with batteries that will store energy made during the time the sun is shining that we could use for the off-hours. The solar collectors being somewhere between 30% and 50%, depending upon the weather. We just don't have that ability right now. One of the other things I would like to touch on is something that biologists refer to as habitat fragmentation. Depending on where you build a facility like this, if it is along a migration route of any animal, it may disrupt that. The disruption can be far-reaching, depending upon what it is. You only have to look as far as the construction of the sustainable beef plant here on the east side of North Platte to see what that fragmentation did with the disruption of the deer habitat that moves up and down the river. I guess the plus side of it is I don't see as many deer killed on Newberry Access now because they pretty much shut that off. The last thing I would touch on is regardless of what type of energy system we're putting in, when it takes the ground, the large amount of ground to put in, and the type of structure that it is, before it goes to construction, there ought to be an extracurricular account set aside for decommissioning because it is going to take a lot of money to decommission those structures. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Alex Chandler. I work for Deep Energy. We develop wind and solar energy systems. I'm from Montana. Work in Denver, Colorado right now, and came out here last night. I didn't have a lot prepared on solar, to be honest. I've heard everyone speak about a variety of topics. If there are some particularly concerning things that people would like a direct response to later, happy to answer some questions. I'll hit on a few, kind of, I guess, highlights I'd like to make. And probably the first one would be, this is a matter of private property rights. Generally, I think most of us agree, we want landowners to be able to do what they want with their land. I don't love the color that my neighbor painted his house, but that's kind of his prerogative. I get that you guys are bringing up, you know, some of the stuff that has been brought up as runoff. That is regulated. That should be part of your runoff regs. It's regulated by the EPA. People have brought up road use, the trucks that deliver panels. They're not overweight. They're not much different than a farm truck that's rolling down the road. And when the projects are developed, that's part of the permitting process is making sure that you're not going to have undue impact on the road, and that can be part of the application process. Reliability of the grid. It is managed by SPP and FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, to, you know, assure that when you flip your power, the light on, it's going to turn on. That's not really the scope of what I feel like this commission should be ruling on. To me, what you guys are, what your guys' duty is is to the local residents here, what can the landowner do with their land? And, you know, I think it's right, the decom aspect, that's important. If a project gets put in, you need to be able to take, you need to make sure that the project will be taken out and the land is restored. That's what you guys are putting in place in your regulations. We're not opposed to that. That's consistent with kind of responsible development. The other thing I kind of, I'm probably running low on time. I know there's a lot of topics in it. You've got specific questions you want me to come back and address. Happy to get on it. The other thing I'm going to kind of hit on is technology changes. You know, when Gerald Gentlemen was built years and years ago, that was the best way to generate power, no doubt. Things will change over time, and I think it's a bit unfair to be coming up here just kind of singling out an industry. You guys are right in that you don't want runoff, running onto other people's lands with toxic chemicals. That isn't, that's not a documented, kind of substantiated thing. Most of these panels are made of silicon, same thing as sand, glass. That's what they're made of. That's not a prevalent problem that's been well documented or with scientific studies that show that's actually an issue. And so where I was with the technology changes, you know, solar, it is dependent on when the sun shines. A few people have brought up solar energy, I mean, batteries, or just storage in general and dispatchability. That is definitely kind of the next frontier, and there is technologically changing. Right now, it is kind of economically difficult, although, okay, although in California and Texas, there are, I wouldn't say hundreds, but many gigawatts of solar energy batteries. And I mean, when I'm talking about gigawatts, I'm talking about the ability to dispatch, like a Gerald Gentlemen, that's a, Gerald Gentlemen owns a gigawatt, 1.3 gigawatts. And so many, many, many of those plants, instantaneously with batteries, no doubt, over time, there needs to be improvement in that. But that's technology changes, and I don't know why you would just turn your cells off from being open to what can be built, you know? You've got, as time passed, people converted their land from rainland to farming. That's a technological change. I think that will continue to happen. Anyway, that's just going to, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Tammy Decker, Norfolk, Nebraska. He just spoke about Texas. What happened to Texas when the power grid wasn't, you know, no longer, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But anyways, you know, the whole power went to heck, and all these people was without. That gentleman there spoke about Texas. And Texas, you know, when their power went out because their power grid did not keep up with it, all these people were without power, and their pipes broke and all kinds of stuff. I mean, they had a mess for months. And as far as California, we're in Nebraska. We don't want to be like California. If we wanted to be like California, we would be like California.
My name is Jim Hoagland, Sutherland, Nebraska. I've only got a couple of questions. How much land can we continue to lose and still feed the nation? When you take land out of productivity, and I mean, when you start to build these plants, when there are heavy trucks and stuff go over, you've lost all productive, even though you say, well, we're going to raise it. You've lost it. I can prove that in 1965. They took one small unit, load of dirt, across my ground. I can still show you those tracks today. It grows nothing. With the compaction, it grew nothing. And you can drive down I-80, you can see every hall road is still there, even though they put grass on it, whatever. When it gets warm, you raise nothing. So how much longer can we continue to do this? And with their power and their domain, it don't make any difference, it seems like, if you got hysterical stuff or whatever, if that power line wants, we don't care what that is. We'll just build our line anyway. Well, that's fine. You can build the line and not do too much destruction. But once the storm hits, all hell breaks loose. They got to get it fixed. It don't make any difference what they tear. They got to get it fixed, it don't make any difference what they tear up. And so we're losing a lot of production on our ground. We're losing a lot of historical stuff due to power lines. And how much more can we stand? We're losing history after history, and I don't think it's necessary, really. Thank you.
My name is Donna Ryan, and I'm a resident of North Platte, Nebraska. And I'm just going to touch on a couple of things that have probably already been touched on a little bit. Thank you for serving Lincoln County. If you should move forward with selecting a company, I hope that you all find out who owns that company. If they have 10% ownership in the company, you need to know who we're doing business with. The other thing is, if you select a company to build, install, maintain, whatever they do, I hope also that you require one and a half times the cleanup cost of this to put it into a financial escrow in Lincoln County. These energy companies want to tap into the $1 trillion, $1 trillion that the president has set aside. So all in all, I hope you put a stamp on their dead on arrival. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on solar?
I have one, Travis Grebel. Ideally, I have a gas station with a bunch of solar panels on it, pretty close to the interstate.
Travis Grebel, are you from Lincoln County?
I'm from Lincoln County. I don't have a gas station by the interstate with a bunch of flybys in the ground, but if I had a garage with a south-facing or west-facing slope, I'd probably want some solar as a possibility. I think that if I was a concerned landowner, that I'd probably want maybe like a percentage of land, but I don't think it's necessarily fair that because I have a minimal amount of land, I can't participate in a big project, maybe a shell company owns something like that, I don't know. But, yeah, I don't know, it's a little disjointed, so I'm just going to, got my name there, it's on the agenda.
Is it Travis Grebel?
10, yep. Travis Grebel, thank you.
I guess I just can't keep with those shit. I mean, it's a petty war. We farm and ranch in Lincoln County. I just want to recap here. I think you get the point that most of the people attending this hearing are against solar energy. And I, for one, want to kind of recap a little bit because I think there's some things that people are not considering. You don't have to drive very far in Lincoln County or from this, where I'm standing right now, to get to some pasture ground. And you'll find landowners that own pasture ground that are operating on easements from The only way to get across those pastures is to travel through an auto gate, which might be 10 feet wide. And in order for these large trucks to get next through my pasture, to build it, or to remove the debris, or do the maintenance, or build their power lines, is to get through my property, to get through these other big property owners. I think that Lincoln County is a wonderful place for agriculture, and that includes ranching. And I don't think it's a good place for solar energy. I think we were progressive when we put in the Gerald Gentleman plant. And we have power now, and I can turn the switch on, and I'm not going to be cold at night, and I can plug my cellphone in, but you cannot replace our power plant with solar energy. And I just don't see the point. We have a past presidential national administration that put in a fence on the border. Now, they also had an extremely good energy policy. Now, then we changed presidential power and we got one that likes solar and wind energy. So they're putting millions of dollars into it. And of course, there's probably some to fill your back pockets, but the people of Lincoln County don't want this, first and foremost. The fence that the past presidential administration put in on the border is now being torn down, some of it, and it's all but stopped getting built. So we have to look in the future and say, well, what will happen in the future? If we put up all these solar panels, will they replace the excellent energy that we have now? Nebraska has got one of the nicest power systems in the country. It's not like other ones. We're not public code. We want to protect our power companies that we have now because we're so used to turning on a switch and plugging in our cellphone at night when there's no solar energy and not getting cold. And I don't want my property to, I don't, I have what little property I have, I want it protected. I don't want them to be driving across my landlocked pasture that only has access by easement. I have so many head of cattle that I run, when I run in that one section, and if there's glare, it doesn't just affect someone who's driving by. Those cattle know, they're not going to grace that corner, they're not going to grace that quarter because they won't, they won't go where there's glare. And I appreciate your listening to me, and I wish I had known that there was going to be an all-day thing because I may not be able to talk about the wind power, and I have a lot to say about that, too. Thank you.
Good morning. Duane McLean, 20099 North Highway 83, North Platte, lifelong resident of Lincoln County and owner and broker of Nebraska Land Brokers. As far as the recent topic that was discussed by one of the speakers about private property rights, the gentleman is exactly correct, it is about private property rights. Lincoln County is 2,575 square miles. There's going to be a lot more individuals owning private property that are going to be affected by the limited number of acres that are going to be installed for solar power, and that is why the private property rights are more important to everyone, not just the ones that are being able to install the solar power. The opportunity that you guys have to listen to the concerned citizens and area people is great opportunity for you to be able to set the regulations for these projects that are going to be developed. I encourage you to do the best you can in order to set the limitations accordingly.
Look, I'm Levi Fisher, resident and landowner in Lincoln County. And to echo Duane's points and the gentleman's points, this is about private property rights. And, you know, I think we're here to talk about the zoning regulations that are there to protect our private property rights. And those zoning requirements were not put in place to protect necessarily my rights on my property, it's also to help protect my neighbors' rights, you know, that I can't build or do something that's going to devalue their property. And the gentleman also spoke that the times are changing, technology's changing, same with these zoning deals. You know, when these zoning requirements were put into place, the possibilities of a wind farm or a solar farm were probably not something that we were concerned about at that point. So I'm going to say, you know, we need to look at those zoning requirements, look at possibly expanding those zoning requirements to help protect my land, just because, you know, you don't want to be put in a spot like you said, if they have to come, if they come to you, you have to approve it based on the current requirement. So make those requirements tougher for them to have to comply by. But that's why they're here, too, because they know that they can come here with their money, with their attorneys, and they know that we are an easy target, too. So we need to look at expanding that, make it where we aren't such an easy target for those projects. But, you know, you guys are the only line of defense to protect my property rights if somebody wants to do something that's going to devalue my property. It's, you know, you can't even compare painting a house a color that I don't like. Part of it is, you don't have to drive across my property every day to paint your house, either. So, you know, that's not even a fair comparison. But that's what you guys were hired here to do, is to help protect everybody's property rights here. And so, you know, things have changed, you know, it's the, I would say that the setbacks, the far-reaching consequences of these projects are a lot more than what these setbacks were originally designed to maintain. So, thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Grau, I'm from Vershing, Nebraska. I just have a couple of quick questions for you, or it's something, some questions to consider. Does the power, these potential solar fields, maybe stay in Lincoln County, or does it go to anywhere else? Does it stay here? I don't know anything. That's a legitimate question in my mind. And also, too, the components that make up the wind farms and solar, where are they made? What percentage is US-produced and what percentage is other countries' produced? I can only assume that a lot of it's in China, but I don't know. But I think those are really important things for you folks to consider, just because the United States is the United States, we have to preserve it as it is. Thank you.
My name is Sharon Ecker, and I own a property next to the power plant in Sutherland. My dad went through the eminent domain process when they built the power plant. So I understand that totally and what it causes. And I think that we all have to acknowledge that we have a God and He is in charge of this world, and we are responsible for our neighbors and what happens to our neighbors. And this process, like Tori Copeland and Jean Dacey said, is a huge understanding. And if you guys don't understand what these two people know, then you need to get ahold of them because it will affect all of your pocketbooks, not just our pocketbooks. It's taking tax money and giving it to the foreigners because greed is involved here. And our federal government wants to take our money, and you don't realize just how deep these pockets will go. And the greed, you don't think will affect you today, but it will in the future generations. And I've turned my back against the greed and the money, and God knows, I could pull in the money if I wanted to. I've been already offered that money, and I'm turning it away from the money because I believe that this Lincoln County deserves to stay pure in God's eyes. And we all need to take an accountability of what we are doing to our neighbors and protect this land, God's nation. And I just beg all of you to really take what Jean Dacey and Tori Copeland has said about the ground rules and all of the precautions that are going to come from this, and it's going to cause taxpayers to go up, it's not going to come down. Once they take your tax money, you're not getting it back. And they keep taking tax money to pay for the dumps and this. And so if you let these nations walk away that are coming in here to build this and then walk away and leave us empty of a money pot, that's what's going to happen here. They proved that in business over business. And over in Germany, I don't know why we can't learn from other people's mistakes. We keep forgetting what people have made a mistake. They had power plants over there, they went to solar and green, and guess what happened? They couldn't make enough generators because the solar in the, wasn't working. So then they had to rebuild the power plants. They learned. Why aren't we learning from their mistakes? We have a great power plant here, and we need to stand by it, and we need to stand by our farmland and our farmer. Nebraska's thing is about farmland, beef, and land. And if we can't produce that, what do we have here in Nebraska? I just hope you will pray about this and search deep in your heart and follow God instead of what the world wants you to believe. And I thank you.
Is there anyone else? Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman's saying nobody else, right? If you were to vote me in presenting a poll, I've done a poll on both wind and solar, I'd like to relay the results of that poll, certainly the solar portion, that way it'd be included instead of...
So as many people know, I generated and put out a public...
So, as many people know, I generated and put out a public opinion survey, because I think that it's our responsibility to make sure that we are representing the people that we serve to the best of our ability, and wanted to give a good thumb on the polls of those that I do serve here in Lincoln County. In case there's still any confusion, this was a survey initial disclaimer statement that was included in the poll that stated very clearly that I was the one that created the poll, that was intended to gauge public sentiment of Lincoln County residents for potential large-scale commercial and utility-grade wind and solar electricity production projects in Lincoln County, that only residents and/or landowners in Lincoln County may participate in the survey, and that if a large enough sample size of respondents, which becomes statistically significant, which I do have experience with statistics, is received, the results of this poll will be utilized by me and potentially other county commissioners, so it is not put forward on behalf of the entire board. That said, the population size of Lincoln County per the U.S. Census Bureau for 2022 is estimated to be about 33,685 people. The end size, the sample size of 100% completed surveys was 503. That allowed calculations at a confidence level of 95% to have these results have a margin of error of 4.34%. I think that that is pretty telling, particularly when we get into some of the results of the questions that were asked. Again, these questions, as you'll see, some that I gleaned and put into this presentation, they're neutral in nature. We worked hard to avoid type 1 and type 2 errors and make sure that this was an unbiased Seeing here, you can quickly glean where the respondents reside in general, and I will make this available to the press as well, should they want to include that in their reporting. Quick question, this was a weighted scale based on the averages of responses in rank order from 1 through 5. You'll see that reliability topped out as far as the most important element, when people turn on their light switch, what they want. Next was affordability, that was followed by economic impact to the community and jobs, that was followed by energy independence, and last on the list in priority was carbon zero or environmentally friendly electricity. I think it's of note that the vast majority of the public, 81.78%, favored the one-year moratoriums that this board put in place for both wind and solar projects until we could take a thorough look at the regulations that we have before us today. I'm going to skip forward to the results on the solar power. First question that I included here is, what do you believe are the most significant benefits of solar power generation for rural Nebraska in Lincoln County? Of the list, there was job creation, increased tax revenue through the nameplate tax, renewable energy source, reduced air pollution, energy independence, and then other, and in your guys' handouts that you have, and as part of the official record, I included those responses for that other, for your review. I think you'll see, though, that the majority of respondents in this situation, or at least most of the respondents, selected none of the above, 46.81%. You can see the other percentages for the other options. And then this was also something that respondents could select all that they thought applied as far as potential benefits. Next question was, what concerns, if any, do you have about potential solar power generation projects in rural Nebraska in Lincoln County? Pretty telling, the results there, visual impact of 66.46% being a concern, sun glare at 43.27%. Impact on wildlife, 64.18%. Property value concerns, 57.97%. Health effects on people and livestock, a little bit less. And then, again, there were some other responses. Do you believe that potential solar power generation projects will have positive and negative impact on the local economy here in Lincoln County and rural Nebraska? You can see those statistics there. I would note that 25.97% thought that there would be a positive impact in general, some varying degrees in that. 15.13% thought it would have a neutral impact. The majority of respondents, at 55.83%, to some degree or another, thought it would have a negative impact on our economy here in Lincoln County in rural Nebraska. 3.07% were unsure. Currently, the regulations concerning large-scale solar projects in Lincoln County include setbacks commensurate with other types of structures. We've identified that through the information that Judy Clark presented to us, and that no changes to those setbacks have been recommended. Question was posed, do you believe that existing setbacks that are equal to other types of structures in the A1 or TA1 zones are adequate and appropriate? Only 16.98% of respondents said yes, 51.78% said no, 31.24% were unsure. So that indicates that the majority of people believe that there should be some consideration to that, which is seen here in this question, do you believe that additional setbacks from property lines and dwellings need to be considered? Resounding 64.36% said yes, 15.93% said no, with 19.71% being unsure. When it comes to the individual property rights, a question that's been posed by numerous people that have testified here today during this public hearing, and consideration being given to a landowner considering allowing large-scale solar arrays on their property, indicated here as person 1, versus neighbors and/or the general public who may not desire large-scale solar arrays in close proximity to their own properties, indicated here as person 2. The question was posed, who should have, where should more consideration lie by this board? 16.56% said much more, person 1, 10.75% said somewhat more, to person 1, 30.97% said equal to both persons, I think that's important for us to consider, 10.32% said somewhat more to person 2, and 26.88% said much more to person 2, being the surrounding property owners of the general public, and again, 4.52% were unsure. Overall, and this is, I'll get into the results of the wind, I would say that overall, the temperature, the sentiments to solar were much more tempered compared to the wind. But overall, do you support or oppose potential large-scale solar projects, generation projects developing in Lincoln County? I think it's pretty important to note that 24.21% had some element of support, only 8.63% were neutral, and the vast majority of 66.53% had some varying degree of opposition, and only 0.63% of respondents were unsure. Also point out, and this goes for both wind and solar, but, you know, the citizens of Lincoln County are not adverse to being good stewards of the environment, our land, and the responsibility we have to future generations to protect those things in spite of what some may say with the resounding opposition that this poll indicates and the testimony that we've heard thus far on solar. But this question, I think, in fact, points that the vast majority of Lincoln County citizens are unopposed to the firm and economically more feasible notion of embracing carbon zero nuclear power here locally. And to that point, only 26.81% were opposed to that idea. So while we may hear people in opposition to this type of carbon zero power generation, that does not mean that the vast majority of Lincoln County citizens are adverse to carbon zero generation, just not in particular solar from the results of this survey. That's all I have at this time with this. Mr. Chairman, I'll have more for the wind portion.
Okay, I would welcome a motion to close the public hearing. On solar energy.
Chairman, I think we close the public hearing on solar energy.
Second. I have a motion and a second need discussion. Go, please.
Duane.
Hi.
Duane.
Hi.
Duane.
Hi. At 11:22, closing the first of our public hearings. I would now open my second.
I would still attach.
Oh.
So, I would tell the board right now, I have not prepared a resolution through the pass, simply because I suspect there are very strong changes in what I'm saying, what I'm planning. So we finally are going to have to discuss what we want to do, which is that we're not actually getting anything passed until that would be next, you know, direction.
Now, remind, I would go on comments from this board.
Chairman, I think we gained some valuable insight today. I can tell you, I pro want to have more questions than answers. The idea was to try and gather as much information, actual information, as we could possible. There is no way that I would be willing to make any kind of decision today with the amount of information I have before me. So I would, I would hope that, myself, I would hope that we would consider this effort and discuss the much more question.
I would like to ask for some clarification on what we are here for today. Is it to accept the recommendation from our family planning zoning commission, or enter in the conversation with them about maybe adjusting things, spend it back to them for consideration, tie it up, give them some guidance, here, I appreciate it.
As far as those is on the agenda for today, that would be just a resolution, adopting recommendations as they stand. That is not the board's only option, it's just your only option for today. The board can essentially direct me to whatever you want in the resolution and change the solar records. Also have the ability to send this matter back to our planning and have them gather a different recommendation, based on public input from this hearing, and if the board wants, we'll look at it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to comment that, you know, we ask the people on our planning staff and the planning commission to do the work that they do. It's not like they get, they pay, they put in a lot of time and effort on this, and I don't weigh trying to diminish their worth, including the stuff that I got with the planning commission, there's a lot of implications to try to present right now, that's just not the, so, I don't, they try to diminish any of these planning issues done. They have done their job, just as they are supposed to do, they spend a lot of time in interviews on this, and I want to say that.
I would agree, Joe, that's also my sentiment, the planning commission does a lot of heavy lifting, and it's obvious from all the testimony that there was a lot to consider, and so let me check in, this is not a reflection on her recommendation at all, it's just simply, I think the way they call it, it is a lot clearer, these regs, and eminent domain dimensions of 18 people, I think, 16, 17, 18, extremely important point in my purview. Another thing that was repetitively mentioned was the subsidies. I will note that a property owner who has irrigation systems on, the grid through my local supply, I am not allowed, there's no guarantee, there's no avenue, to install an individual panel system on each pivot, feed that back through that meter off-season to offset my fence. However, the financial side is looking at differently, and that's a little bit disingenuous, I think, because I find others can offset their investment. So that just popped in my head, because I've heard that repetitively, a huge amount of tax, I mean, well, but I do think we have to ask for assistance in analyzing all some data to get first app, and I would strongly encourage we go back, we look, my question initially was to, did we call, was, what resources the property owner have that says I don't really want this type of money? And the answer was no. Having been impacted by the planning behind, to us with my home, I take exception of that. I think property rights, yes, but we also protect those who have rights next door, so, I think that should be considered strongly. In fact, I wouldn't really go for anything that didn't provide relief, it's not all about, no avenue, really, certainly on this property, just something in general. It's well-established, nation-wide, that we have time in zoning for that reason, they are interested in small farms. So, I'm not sure where we go either from here, but I think maybe a good first step is collaboration with Judy and the planning commission, and get some, and get some people there, say, let's get a little deeper, let's get a little more detail, much more detail.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. I'd like Judy actually to come forward, as I explained in the presentation, from you. Should we send this back to the planning commission, they come up with some additional recommendations, setbacks, what have you, I don't know what that would look like? Would there be a need for another public hearing regarding those changes?
I would use that, yes.
So it's within our purview of the board, come up with our own changes, and if we were to do that, would we then have to have a public hearing for changes that we make?
I don't use that. The purpose of the public hearing, A, is to help out, to comment on the proposed regulations, find the information you have today.
Thank you.
So, knowing these questions, just want to get some clarification from Judy regarding what we already have in place, which we commission, is there a requirement for bond deal that's notified, or an estero account?
That we currently have in place?
Currently have in place.
That is not proposed.
Right.
Currently in place, no, we do not have a bond. Currently in place, there's very minimal regulations for solar.
Putting the recommendations that have been proposed to us was included in that, is that satisfied as far as the requirement for us?
Yes, so the proposal to you added the stipulation of decommissioning, and as part of that decommissioning plan, there is a couple of things in there that does say the plan shall also identify the financial resources that will be available to pay for decommissioning and removal of the solar farm and accessory facilities. Additionally, a bond or equivalent enforcement resource to guarantee removal and restoration upon discontinuance.
Okay, I knew that answer, I was just making sure that we got that out on the record. So, thank you for that.
Yep.
The next question I have, is there anything that we can do as far as our regulations that would require any potential projects? We're not, we're not G K specific projects here today, we're talking about our regulations. But in those regulations, can we require any power purchase? But in those regulations, can we require a power purchase agreement to be a requirement that that has had first prior to?
Um, I, I think it would be beneficial to whoever is doing the solar farm to have that in place prior to us approving a conditional use. Because we could approve a conditional use and until they have that power agreement, they're really going nowhere.
Right, and we have entities, and again, I'm not trying to get into specifics, but I know projects that are in place that have purchase options or basically money in exchange between two properties. And it's my understanding that there's no purchase, a power purchase agreement.
That is my understanding also, yes.
So, do we have the authority because this board, do you have that as a requirement in our regulations prior to conditional use of that? Or have our?
Tyler, I'm going to defer that question to you.
Your asking, my opinion, no, I don't think you can, I don't think it's reasonable. Okay. I provide, we apply with the relevant rest statute, if you purpose or zoning business or zoning. You can find which one it gets to those enumerated categories, I don't have to listen, as I see here, I don't think that's a requirement. Okay, so, just seeking clarification. And then, secondly, comes down to operational definitions with regard to solar installations. Do we differentiate, and I know the answer, do we differentiate between a traditional solar array? Or what is inverted, solar furnace? And do we differentiate as part of the regulations in that?
No.
Do we have the ability to address the setbacks that are currently in place?
I go with whatever is decided here. If you want to send it back to the planning commission, I'm sure they will take a look at whatever your direction is. If you want us to look at setbacks, if you want us to look at differentiating between different types of solar. Any of your direction would be greatly appreciated. Planning basically was asked to take a look at it. I wish we would have had a number of these individuals testify. We discussed the solar regulations, I believe at two meetings, that were not necessarily public hearings, but they were open to the public, where people could have came and expressed their opinions. We didn't have, we may have had maybe a couple of people show up. And then, when we had the public hearing, I believe there were two individuals that testified. And they were actually solar energy individuals. So, planning commission does a lot of research on their own, but it would have been very helpful to have a few of these individuals that are expressing their opinions so that they could make an educated decision.
I'm going to echo what Joe alluded to. As far as the both topics, a lot of conversations leading up to today on wind, but not so much solar, until the information that was presented to us here. I don't feel like I have had adequate time to consider all everything that's been presented. I would like additional time to pour over the information, ask some questions. I have a whole list of questions, more questions than answers. So, I would appreciate some more time and conversation with the planning commission and doing some more research on rules and regulations.
Okay. Any other questions from this board for Judy? Thank you, Jim. I would welcome Jackson from this board to tell us what our next steps would be.
I think that we probably, it would be my good mind, Mr. Chairman, that we table this from off. Give us a appropriate time, because I would like to see me personally, some consideration given to setbacks, particularly for guidelines. I'd like some cleaning up of the language, the operational definition between traditional solar arrays and solar furnaces and single energy, those kind of issues, and then, stringent regulations with regard to that latter one. And then, just making sure that everything is sound with regard to decommission. But I think that's going to take some time. I don't think that I want my personal opinion to send it back to the planning commission. I think that this board can handle that. We have a well fixed experience and knowledge when it comes to planning zoning. And I think ourselves, I would probably recommend that the board maybe spearhead that of whether you would. I'm not a fan of doing everything by faith, but I think in this regard, it's appropriate.
As a viable option, certainly would be. I do feel as though we have garnered great amount of information and opinions. And I think it would be good that we adjust that information.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I failed to mention during the testimony that every, a couple area residents had emailed me and asked if they had opinions, they could not be here today, if their opinions could be read in. One of those residents emailed all of us and I believe it was given to Tyler also. And they have requested that that be read in, is it too late for that?
We have proposed a public hearing. We have to, we have to turn that off.
I think the email correspondence is critical to both topics.
It is critical to both topics.
I would propose that we get ready into the second hearing as we sit at the public.
Would that satisfy your request? Thank you, Lord.
I believe for me it would, but I'm not the one that wrote the document. Amy was the document chair for promoting.
Yes, and you each have a copy of it. It was the package that was sent to me this morning.
Yeah, we have a copy, let's just let it be.
Okay, sure. And so, it's kind of read in or not sectioned.
Can I have someone's copy of it?
Chairman, I'm not necessarily opposed to a sort of committee approach, but I don't think you want to leave out the party for vast hearings. Any type of research is crucial. She knows what I'm talking about, the job, if anybody would say otherwise.
Yeah.
So, I'm certainly opposed, but also got some very talented people on that one as well.
That was going to be my suggestion, is try to have some sort of a joint endeavor.
I think maybe that's appropriate because I'm very dedicated to people like that. I don't want to over.
Okay, we do have a planning committee. Make sure it's France and you and me. I would challenge Judy Park to come up with a, a non-formal committee from your group to meet the partner. John, you again?
Yes, you did, that's your party that committed.
Yeah, it's already a point.
Oh, okay, thank you.
My personal opinion, and we'll look around the world. This is a topic that has garnered a lot of attention, a lot of data, a lot of emotion. I feel like it's important for all five of us to be a part of that conversation and be able to hear it firsthand. And in my opinion, I, I'm not really on board of having just a committee have those conversations.
That's fair enough, never, if you're in a committee.
During a meeting, during a conference meeting and having the open transparency.
So, work session, maybe you have to mic up and do for budget over the course of the next month.
Judy, could you hear some of your people participate in work session?
Yes, in the past, we've done a county planning commission, county commissioner joint work session. I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that again.
Okay.
I appreciate the suggestion, which is honest.
Okay.
Chairman, according to the nomination, you've got some existent that have been received and accepted. Exhibit one, as always, is a certified copy of our conference plan, that's kind of how we work. Exhibit two is written statement by Emily Kaufman, that's out of both areas, that's in the front line. Exhibit number three is the results of Fisher Brothers' public opinion poll, that is applicable to both areas. And exhibit number four, written by Commissioner Ooh, that is also applicable to both areas. I would accept those articles, you can add those.
Sure. Okay, I would welcome a suggestion to table action on this poster.
So, I think because it's work sessions, if you want to, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to table limited action for one month, while also scheduling after every meeting this board has in the interim, a work session to be held after our normal business. That would be my motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and the other discussion.
Calendar, Fisher Vegas, for us to make a determination on solar regulations on November 6.
And usually, they do people to make a decision. And I think, I think that's good that we have something worth, that's a good thing.
The other discussion. Roll call please.
Friends?
Aye.
You believe?
I have.
Queens?
Aye.
Lower?
Hi.
Lower.
Aye.
It is 11:43, we will take a five minute recess and then start back up again at 11:43. You got any years solved down here? Years solved it down? People here.
I think I have. I can't, not now, but I mean, I think I got it clear in my talk. Oh, that's gone. Oh, that's gone. Well, at least I think I know what you're going to do with the second one.
Your seats, please.
Think your data would do that for you, Rick?
You'd think so.
I guess you're a mayor, who says that. I didn't commission guys like you.
First time you did. Thank you for being with us. Didn't really expect to have a quicker response. Okay. At eleven fifty-three, we will now open this public hearing to discuss and consider action on a resolution on amendments linking county regulations on regulation article two, section two, article three, definitions of article eight, sections eight point seven, eight point eight, one oh six, small wind energy systems, which are reusing grid energy systems. We will open this, uh, hearing. First, we will have comments from Prime Commissioner Judy Clark.
Judy Clark, Lincoln County Planning Administrator. Um, so with this one, and I, I know there was maybe a little confusion with the last one, so I just want to get this out there. These regulations are in place. We do have zoning regulations for wind energy. What Planning Commission was asked to do was to take a look at it and see if they felt that they were adequate, and if they weren't, to present to you some additional changes or amendments. So that's what this is, same as the last one. Um, July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, Lincoln County Planning Commission passed a resolution with five voting in favor, two voting against, so it was not a unanimous decision. Um, the resolution is signed. Um, attached to these review comments, you will see highlighted in red the changes that were made. There were very few changes made. Um, the changes that were made were an increase in the setback regulations, and then a decibel level was changed from fifty to fifty-five. And then, um, I believe that was it. This one already has a decommissioning plan in place, so that Planning Commission did not feel needed to be amended. Again, I will tell you, Planning Commission discussed this at an open meeting, um, two times, I believe, and then held a public hearing. We had maybe two or three people speak, that was it. So, just so you know where they're coming from, um, Planning Commission, they do their own research, I provide them with information, um, and we discuss the topic when we look at changing some zoning regulations. And again, we are always open to public comment. Um, the only thing, I guess I really want to say, well, two things. One is remember when you're taking public comment that, um, you may have people actually speaking about a proposed project. I have no application in place, so there is no proposed project until that application comes to my office. Um, the thing you have to remember is you're looking at this as a whole, for the county as a whole, not for one particular project. So one particular project might not be able to meet proposed regulations, but a different project may be able to meet proposed regulations. So, you know, take that into consideration when you're listening here. And the other thing is, um, a two-mile setback is really not out of place when you think of some of the other conditional uses that come in front of you. For example, confined animal feeding operations. They get to a certain number of animal units, they also have a two-mile setback. The other thing to think about, too, is, um, in this, we provided the same provision that we provided, and it's already in place, the same provision that we provide to confined animal feeding operations, they do have an option of a waiver. So those setbacks may be waived by a neighboring property owner if that project is going to be closer than the proposed setbacks. So.
Uh, I, I misspoke, the public hearing has not been opened. We have, uh, comments from Judy Clark. Are there any questions from this board, Judy Clark?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay. Uh, point of clarification, uh, because it was raised in recess, uh, from Concerns and, uh, about the reason why we're considering these. Back in March, this board put moratorium in place on any new, uh, wind and solar power generation projects occurring for at least one year, uh, or unless this board, through recommendations of the Planning Commission, make modifications to our planning and zoning regulations concerning conditional energy, so that's what we're doing here today. Um, tabling like we did the last, uh, item on the agenda for a month uh, does not mean that the moratorium goes out of place, it's still standing, there's still a year-long moratorium in place until we finalize regulations as this board. Uh, so just wanted to make sure that the public understood that, just because we're not taking action doesn't mean that a project can come in and, uh, operate under the existing provisions in regulation, uh, because the moratorium still is standing. Uh, questions that I have for you, Judy, uh, in relation to the proposed changes to regulation of making the setbacks. Uh, I understand, as you pointed out, that, you know, the two-mile, uh, is not a typical, we have that with other things like confined food operations. Uh, other counties may change as to their, uh, regulations when it comes to setbacks for wind power generation projects. What is the most stringent regulations or setbacks that currently exist in the state of Nebraska? Would one of our park here?
To my knowledge, it's three miles.
Three miles?
Yes.
And then we have some counties that don't have setbacks, is that right?
Yeah, we have some counties that go, um, the height of the tower, double the height of the tower, some counties are a certain number of feet, sixteen hundred, eighteen hundred feet. Um, some counties simply don't, yeah, like you said, don't have anything. And then we do, I believe it's two counties that actually have passed the three mile, if I'm correct. Some other ones may have changed.
That have passed the three mile.
Have passed the three mile.
Uh, because I believe Lake Buffalo County has five-mile setbacks with a municipality jurisdiction like that, Greece.
Okay.
I think there's a few others that are out there, but, uh, the point that I'm making is we're not stringent as far as these proposed changes.
Not as proposed. Um, one of the things that we talked about at Planning Commission was, you know, if you get too strict, then you're ultimately eliminating it completely. Um, a couple of those counties, Lincoln County is a huge county. There's a lot of open spaces, there's a lot of spaces that have confined animal feeding operations that meet the two-mile setback. I'm sure there's probably locations that you can find that would meet a two-mile setback. You get into the three, four, and five-mile setbacks, you are essentially saying no, absolutely no to wind energy, wind generation, and so we discussed that a little bit at Planning Commission. What is too much? Um, because we don't want to put Tyler in a position where he's got to go to court and defend us because we said we want a five-mile regulation on it.
Right, so, um, where you take a look at, uh, St. Buffalo County, for instance, because I did pull up there, it's because I was just curious about other counties in our way. Um, they have lesser setbacks from property lines and from dwellings. Uh, but with the growth that the county is potentially going to be experiencing here in the coming years, um, I was curious as to why the consideration was given to possible setbacks from municipal boundaries. Uh, as we may see villages in the city more flat growing, uh, here due to the recent economic development projects that are underway, and those that are not been announced.
Um, quite frankly, that wasn't brought up by Planning Commission, um, whether that's on me or in our research that we didn't find it, um, it just wasn't brought up. I will say, yeah, and I will say again, um, confined animal feeding operations do exactly that. You have to be five miles from the city, three miles from any village jurisdiction.
Okay.
So it is something that, that could happen.
Okay, are there any other questions from this board, Judy?
I, I have a question, you mentioned during your, um, introduction about waivers. So waivers in the livestock feeding industry, if you don't have the required area space and you go to the neighbor and they are okay with it, the neighbor can, is she grant a waiver? Or is that a planning commission?
Nope, nope, it's between the property owner doing the project or the, the person doing the project and the neighboring property owner. So if the project is going to approach on whatever the given setback is, we'll say, for example, two miles, they can go to that property owner and say, you know what? We want to be here, we think it's going to be fabulous. Would you grant us a waiver to be closer to your property than what the regulations state? They have an agreement between each other, I don't know that we would even necessarily see that agreement, but, um, as long as that agreement is in place, then we could, um, go ahead and grant that project because they've made a negotiation with that waiver. Um, we've done a number of those with confined animal feeding operations. Um, also, it's reciprocal, so, um, if a person wants to put a house next to a confined animal feeding operation that is too close, they can also request that waiver from that direct individual.
Yeah, the questions from this board for Judy Clark?
I have one question, Judy. Um, when the Planning Commission considered these setbacks, increasing them as they did, what was the impetus for those particular setbacks?
So when we look at, um, changing or amending regulations, generally what we do is we look at some of the neighboring counties or other jurisdictions that are doing similar things to see how close we are. We don't, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, we don't want to be the one that says, hey, we're going to do a five-and-a-half mile. We want to compare with what our regulations are to what some of our neighboring communities are doing. So we do a little bit of research there, um, and that's kind of what we looked at, uh, mostly, and, um, I'm sure they had some conversations, you know, with some people when they were doing their research. Um, basically, we, we don't try to go too crazy out of the norm, outside of what other Nebraska counties are doing.
From, from looking at that report, though, there are, we're all over the place.
Yes.
There is not a normal or medium gauge to use, is my assessment.
Oh, I would agree, I would agree, they are all over the place. You go from, um, you know, very, very large setbacks to very, very minimal setbacks. And that's all I anticipated. Um, some things that came up in Planning Commission was what were, what were the effects going to be on cattle that are actually grazing there? Are there effects, are there any effects to that? What would the effects be to neighboring houses? Um, shadow flipper was a big one that was discussed. Um, is there a noise level? Those types of things, plus we looked again at what other communities were doing. And I don't think there's any reason why Lincoln County should be on the bottom end of the scale, and I don't think that there's any reason why we should be on the top end of the scale. But it seems to work, um, these regulations have been in place, and I believe we had back in twenty twelve, I believe it was sixteen hundred feet, that was increased to, um, five-and-a-half times the structure height, which would be, or changed, I guess it wasn't increased, it was changed to five-and-a-half times the structure height, I believe, in twenty twenty. Um, and then again, we were asked to look at it again in twenty twenty-three.
You were asked to look at it by who?
By your board. When you guys put the moratorium on it, we were basically asked to review those regulations.
And during that request, was there sentiment shared of, of what the board desired the outcome to be?
Um, we were asked to look at setbacks, not necessarily needs to be five miles or I don't want it, but we were asked to look at setbacks, at least that's what I was asked. Now, I can't tell you if there was individual conversations between one of you and a Planning Commissioner, I couldn't tell you that.
Any other questions for Judy Clark from this board? Oh, wait, no, these are the questions. Yes. Okay, um, I would repeat my comments from earlier this morning. I would encourage you to be kind and considerate of your people that differ from your opinions and you would ask them to be of yours. And again, uh, if an officer that you elect not to be that kind, I'm sure he could help you find the exit from this room and possibly from this door. So with that in mind, I would open this public hearing at, uh, twelve oh seven, and I'm going to turn this over to Deputy County Attorney Tyler Popey.
All right, as before, comments are going to be allowed five minutes to speak. If you go out and prepare a presentation, uh, you're allowed ten minutes to do that. Again, you can report yourself politely and bring yourselves up here, that would be great, all right, once. Um, I will add, uh, I understand that this has been incredibly sensitive topic, it's very traumatic for a lot of people, but this is a public hearing, a county official, keep the applause. Uh, that would be just a little more professional than that. And who would like to be first?
First, I'd like to commend the commissioners. I did not see a single glazed eye the entire morning.
Sir, would you please sign?
My name is Ronald, is Ron Roberts. I do have printed copies of my, of what, at least a part of my presentation, may I present those?
Yes, please. If you'd like those remarks, sir, as I'm here.
First, I would like to say, in the late nineteen seventies, we had a similar situation. We had these huge machines that started crawling across our sand, very fragile sand hills. Behind them, people actually tore up the grass and was holding it in place. Today, those machines produce the vast amount of crops produced in Lincoln County. At the time those machines came in, there were people who were impassioned against them. There were other people who had more of a limited, let's see what happens, approach. Fortunately, those people prevailed. Uh, today's environment, politically, as, as an example provided by our national government and our national media, is that if we have an issue, you should be this way, you should be this way. The guys in the middle appear to be just kind of overlooked. I would ask the board to consider what's best for Lincoln County, and I didn't hear a lot of impassion, I heard a lot of good information here this morning. Uh, consider the well-thought-out information. Uh, you've got to listen to the passion for and against, but weigh the good, solid information. Okay? Um, next thing, some of us, Joe, if I could point to you with the beard, remember that when there were a lot of smokestack industries in this country, when we had a lot of pollution in air, water, we've cleaned up a lot of it. We really need to clean up more. I'd ask you to give very careful consideration. Do you want Lincoln County to be a part of that cleanup? And anybody with any knowledge of wind and solar energy knows that it will never replace a gentleman plant. It's only available when the wind blows and the sun shines. We need the, the plants, wind and solar supplemental energy. The next factor, no one has brought up. Maybe one person alluded to it a little bit, previous administration, well, and, and our current administration, is focused on global warming. I don't know whether it's global warming that is caused by man or not. With the various information and misinformation that we have, it's very difficult to make a consideration. One thing that I am convinced of, the political winds are going to blow back and forth. But the demand for energy, for electrical energy in this country is snowballing and it will continue to snowball. It's absolutely, if there is such a given fact, in the, in future. One minute? Thank you. We, we are, it is that we are going to require more and more energy. If you have, if you have something better than solar and wind, let's have it. If you don't, are we going to be relying on people from the outside begging them to give us enough energy? Oh, there are a couple other things. You give a bunch of farmers and ranchers money. Okay, you get solar energy, you get money. What are they going to do with it? They're going to put it back into the farmer ranch. We could actually improve our environment. You go to the places that have these schools that are in their tax districts are benefiting. Other local entities are benefiting from it. Let's, let's look at this with a logical idea that, hey, somehow or another, we've got to increase electrical production. You got a better idea? Let's hear it. Thank you, sirs. And again, thank you, all of you. I don't know how I could have sat there without going, ah.
That's someone else's hand I dropped on the floor. I can't pick it up.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Julie Drennan. I'm an outreach manager with RWE Clean Energy. We are a owner-operator of wind, solar, and battery storage projects in the U.S. And for wind projects, we have over 30, and we operate over 3,000 wind turbines. So I have a lot of comments to say, and this is a structured comment. First, I do want to address the setback distance. With respect to Judy, I have had conversations with her. And I respect what the planning commission has done, bringing this forward. Two miles would certainly be an outlier in the state of Nebraska. It is, and, and at that, it is exclusionary and it is, it would constitute a wind energy ban for wind projects. So I want to be extremely clear about that, that in our project that we're considering in the area, that setback would cancel out the whole project. What we see, and I did conduct a survey of Nebraska counties, the ones I could find, of their ordinances and setback distances, the vast majority are, you know, from dwellings, they are 2,000 feet is the vast, is the majority of those. And then from property lines, it's 1,000 feet. So just to be clear, there's quite an array of differences here. And I think that, that two miles is certainly an outlier. In your neighboring counties, you look to Dawson for three miles, but we see Custer has a quarter mile, for example. So if you're going to pick, it's, it's good to look at the others that, that land in unreasonable setbacks in, you know, modern times when we have to revise that with warranty setback increases. I do also want to submit for public record a memo that we have prepared on Mr. Brun's survey that does voice some concerns with bias. The reason I bring that up here is, again, just because that survey was submitted to public record here, I would like to submit this memo in response. In particular, there are two items of that survey that I think are meant to address. One is that the coal plant, Gerald Jenlin was brought up. The other is that nuclear was brought up. There's nothing to suggest that these are competing with wind. You can have an energy grid that has those, has wind, has solar. It's, it's not as though, as the survey might imply and what I heard from comments here, that having one means the closing of the other. So I think that that implication in the survey, along with some other areas that I indicated in my memo, might lead people to think that, you know, wind is going to have negative results in the county, whereas it's truly only an added benefit. The wind farm that we're considering here would have a tax revenue benefit of 27 million over 30 years to the county. So that, and that's just state regulated. So that, that's mandated by the state of Nebraska that we pay that capacity tax. And the majority of that would go to Brady schools. So I would ask this board to not vote to accept the two-mile setback and 2.5-mile setback. I would ask you to reconsider and to look at some of the other counties that have shorter distance setbacks and not pass a wind energy ban here today. Thank you.
Julie, any catch? Where are you from again?
So I'm from Minnesota and I, I work with RWE Clean Energy.
And where is RWE headquartered now?
Chicago.
So that's where their headquarters is? I thought it was a German company.
We are a U.S. subsidiary of a German parent company.
Julie, do you want to offer something for the board?
Yes. I haven't written my name yet. Do you want me to do that me first?
Good afternoon. I know it's saying good morning, but I guess it's afternoon. My name is Daryl Meyer. I'm a veteran marine from here in North Platte. I travel from North Platte south, north of the High Plains and to the West Coast for my work, to Iowa, Minnesota, Wisconsin, as a family. Wind tower farms are being put in place in many states. I travel for work and visit in family with these clients and friends who have wind towers and/or solar panel installations on their property, or neighbors' properties, or the general area. Regarding setback distances, property lines, homes, wetlands, it does vary. It's like Spence said, anywhere from zero to 1,000 to 2,500 feet from residences. We can discuss advantages and disadvantages of hydro, coal, nuclear, wind, and solar power toward blue face. We can all, be all geared up, but my opinion is the only correct thing. My urge to you is that we take a step back, realize just like this Robert said, we need a variety of ways of generating electricity. Coal, we need nuclear, we need wind, we need hydro, we need solar. We need all those different types of things because we do have an increasing need for electricity. It's going to keep increasing. Regarding setbacks in Lincoln County, I urge you to take a step back a minute and take it by a project, by project, and establish setbacks and not a one-size-fits-all. So just for a minute, let's not focus on current proposed projects. Let's look at what we have going right now in Lincoln County. What if Union Pacific wanted to put up some wind towers or solar panels to generate some of their electricity? Would you keep these stringent setbacks in place for Union Pacific? What if the new packing plant wanted to do the same thing? What if farmers wanted to put in more things, solar installations in their corners? I have friends in Custer County that did just that. They sell the power to Custer County Power. I do the same thing at my own alone solar panels. The excess electricity goes right back to North Platte and they sell it again. So it's a win-win for both North Platte and myself. If current feedlots or other confined facilities in the county want to put up their own wind or solar, are we going to say, no, you can't because of strict setbacks? These types of examples I see all over in many states with many individuals and their projects. So you might say, well, those are not talking about big wind or solar projects. That's correct. But what if proposed wind projects were located in an isolated area of Lincoln County with few or any residences located in or near the proposed area? For example, whatever proposed site, let's say a square or rectangular area of the county, had basically no residences within two miles of the east and north sides of the proposed area. Let's say on the south side, you have several residences near the property line. Let's say on the west side, you only had two or three residences and none within three quarters of a mile of the west property line. Can we not, for this type of project, say, okay, on the east and north side of the project, the setback's a quarter of a mile. South side, one mile. West side, three quarters of a mile. It's just a type of approach, not possible. Mine's some friends in Kansas have wind towers on their properties or neighbors' properties in counties where there are no setback limits. Other counties in Kansas have 1,000 to 2,500, is it?
One million, sir.
Okay, setback from residences. 500 feet from property lines. All of these installations have a value that property taxes are generated for that particular county. Sure, for each of these examples, there are long-term benefits for the property owner. But sometimes people are just jealous of other people earning money. In these places, the owners of the property do receive payments. Counties receive payments in almost the same amount of money per tower as what the landlords do. And the counties will receive that property taxing money as long as they're there. In California, the county I go to, San Antonio County, has the worst roads I drive on in California. San Antonio County, Fresno County, have a large solar farm right on the county line. Fresno County told the developers, you launch your project there, you help us with the roads. And they did.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mike, do you want your record comments? Mike, did you want your current comments more than this is good?
Please.
My name is Peggy Lustrum-Pape. I'm the general partner at Prairie Creek Ranch Partnership. The partnership is owned by myself, my husband, and our children. And we derive our income from cash rent, primarily pasture ground, also alfalfa and hay ground. This land was previously owned by my mother and father, John and Mula Lustrum. The land and cattle were my dad's passion. He worked from dawn to dusk, seven days a week, and spent the majority of his days driving through the pasture to make sure the cattle were watered and fed. Way up into the 90s, he was still doing that. When I was growing up, every spare nickel was invested in more land. No fancy machinery or furniture for us. If something was needed, the motto was, see if you can get it used or fix it. My dad valued the land so much, so that when most people would have retired in their 70s, he found an opportunity and he went to the Federal Land Bank and got one of the largest loans they had ever offered at that point to buy the Hadley Ranch in Lincoln County because it adjoined some of the land that he already had in Lincoln County. He ran the ranch and my mother kept the books to the penny and made sure mortgages were paid in full. Ever since my partnership has owned our part of the land, I receive pink and yellow property tax statements, like clockwork, every single year. This just increases my expenses because, of course, if you cash rent, you know, that's your major, major expense is the property tax. It also makes it more difficult for me because I slept with my retirement, along with my husband, who's a handicapped Vietnam vet. And I would like to pass that land on to my children. I don't want to have to sell that land. My dad worked so hard for that land that I want to keep it and pass it on as a legacy he gave to me. Years ago, I was driving along the interstate and I noticed all these huge turbines. Now, I grew up watching and hearing those old windmills. In fact, I had one right up on my bedroom window. And it screeched and it groaned, but no one ever complained about it because we knew if that windmill wasn't doing that when it was very windy, we were in trouble. We either didn't have water for our cattle or we didn't have water for our house. I began to think about the turbines and I looked at them and I thought, you know, they're more graceful and much more peaceful than those old windmills that I used to look at. I actually liked the white, clean color against the blue sky and clouds. I also began to think of the huge electric transmission lines that were put on our land without permission from my dad. Did that kind of destroy some of the beauty of the land that he loved so much? Yes, it did. But my dad was practical. He knew it was for the public good.
One minute, sir.
And he could not fight the progress that the lines represented. Recently, I learned that the county would like to implement strict setbacks. I have negotiated a lease with RWE. And those setbacks would probably end any chance I have of putting in a wind farm that would help me pay for those taxes and keep my land. I asked respectfully the commissioners to vote no on extreme setbacks that I believe are way beyond the norm in our region. And it will not permit you as county officials to act for the common good of the county. Leave yourself the option to pick and choose between the wind farms that are remote and will benefit the county economically and the ones that might cause real disruption to the county and your residents. Thank you.
My name is Rick Wyndham. I am a resident here in Lincoln County. Do you need me to repeat my credentials from the earlier trial? Sorry, one minute. Good. I'll focus a little bit on wildlife, which I have probably written thousands of articles about that and environmental impacts. To start with, with the prairie chicken and sage grouse. University of Oklahoma has done a study and found that the locations that are often cited as a place to put a wind generation facility happens to be exactly where those birds want to put their legs and breeding grounds. Apparently, they knew better than we where the best places for them to start with. There are also, prairie chickens and the sage grouse are a threatened species. So that if you are considering a spot for wind generation, I ask that you have the Nebraska game of... I ask that you have the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service look at that area in question. I mentioned in my earlier statements that when you cite a facility like this, you can create what is known as habitat fragmentation. And with prairie chickens and sage grouse, that is documented now. There is also a mounting body of evidence on low-frequency sound and the disruption with wildlife and with humans. None of that is yet finalized, but it is a concern in many places. One other animal that's not generally thought of when we talk about wind generation is bats. U.S. Department of Energy and the United States Geological Service did a study that shows bats don't necessarily hit the rotating blade. Their echolocation systems take care of that. But if they fly, dodge the blade, fly in behind it in the low-pressure zone, that low-pressure zone is so strong that they can actually invert their lungs out of their bodies. In one of the studies I was involved with, that was a case in point. We would find dead bats on the ground and we finally figured out what was causing that. One question I would ask to anybody that is looking to build a facility like this is, would you build a project without federal subsidies? Right now, current dollars, it costs $37 to $81 per megawatt hour to produce a wind generation facility. A fossil-fired plant such as we have here in Lincoln County can do that for $30 to $35 a megawatt hour. So there's a significant difference. Maybe summed up best with a quote from Warren Buffett that stated, "The only reason to build wind generation is to get the subsidies." I think he's on some. A study released by the EPA estimated that wind turbines are only 20 to 40% efficient. Wind, a good design might get to 45 and the theoretical maximum is known as, is known as the Bets limit and that's about 59%. Now, when you factor in weather changes and things like that, the wind blows sometimes, not at all times, although in Nebraska, we think it always blows. 30 to 30%, 33% is what the efficiency factor comes out on a wind generation facility. Now, would you invest in your own vehicle if it only ran a quarter to a third of the time? And what would your guarantee of getting to this meeting might have been today with that type of return? According to the EPA, wind turbines have a service life of about 20 years, although some do go to 25, but their efficiency starts to drop off rapidly. Conventionally thinking, right now within the industry, you decommission them at about the 25-year mark. Now compare that to Gentleman Station over by Sutherland, which is now 45 years old and produces more power than any wind farm can. Or the hydro here in North Platte, which is about 90 years in running. Last thing I'll say is a dilemma of what to do with some of the parts. 85% of a wind turbine can be recycled if it's a steel tower. The other thing is mainly the blades. Right now, there's not a viable source for that. Go to Google Earth and look near Casper, Wyoming. They are building a mountain as they stack the blades up and then cover it dirt. Thank you.
My name is Jim Holgood and I've been here once before. I got one question come to mind. Can the county build in something? I've turned over 35 years on the rural fire board. I know what the hardships are for each one to do. We are, the closest fire department is 15 miles from this project. Can that be built in that they have to have some sort of a fire equipment on hand to take care of the, start, because you're 20 to 30 minutes out to get there. Wind like yesterday, 40 mile an hour, it's out of control. And you're going to fight for days, lose property, cattle, what have you. So I've just, my question is, can there be something built in so that there is a, on land, fire equipment and manpower to do it? Because I think it's something that really needs considered. Thank you. Do I need to sign in again?
Tori Copeland again, Sutherland, landowner, business owner, and I might add also, I've been in industrial electrical business for almost 30 years and I run my own private business now as an electrical contractor. So my basis of knowing electricity, I do have quite a bit of knowledge there. I think sometimes we get lost in the emotions here. Some of these people are talking about the private versus commercial. That's really what we're not supposed to be talking about today. I know Judy Clark mentioned there's also no proposed projects out there, whatever. Well, maybe not officially proposed, but we know they're out there. It has been said on the record today, plus I have talked to some of the businesses and landlords who are dealing with signed easements to build those. Biggest thing I have to also say again is about this eminent domain. You guys have the right as the county commissioners to put something in there not allowing eminent domain to be used to cross my property or someone else's property to service this. Now, I agree, people should probably be able to use their property for whatever they want, comma, as long as it doesn't adversely affect the neighbor's value. Setting back a quarter-mile setback, that's not enough, in my opinion. Those things are tall enough, they will fall close to the fence at a quarter of a mile. I realize the blades are even bigger than that. The setbacks too, we have to be careful what you wish for. Say it's a two-mile setback. Therefore, property I've owned for 100 years, family 200 years. If I want to build a house now next to that solar or wind farm, well, now I might not be able to build within two miles of them. Even if I chose without the solar or wind farm, signing off on that, because it goes both ways. Because I know it has become to the planning commission and therefore conditional use to build a house too close to a confined feedlot operation. So you have to get permission from the feedlot owners to build. So now therefore, if you've got two miles around, you might have to ask permission from these private companies, hey, can I build something or a barn over there? Now that is adversely affecting the private owner yet again. Another thing that needs to come up here is our project. That is to do with wind power. Anybody, our project that was turned down to Jim Holgood and some of the people fought successfully, it's backed. About a possible project that will be tied in with wind power. Anybody who doesn't think that any more transmission lines getting built anywhere will not allow more wind power to, or encourage it, is a fool. Our project will be, excuse me, I can't mention that. We have to talk about the eminent domain on the power lines servicing these wind farms. Again, a public power district will condemn across a private landowner to access that, whether it be a road, whether it be the transmission lines. That is something you guys have to consider and you should be able to write that in there. The adverse effect to the roads, you can put that in the conditional use permit that they have to build up the roads or put it back better than ever. It will adversely affect the roads. I can see a huge amount of wind projects coming north of here in the next few years, especially if additional power lines get built. It will continue, it will be a domino and balloon effect on that. You do have the right to regulate some of those things. But just be remember, be careful what you wish for on those regulations because you might be regulating the person who's been there forever, not now then allowing them to be able to do what they want, even though that would not adversely affect that neighbor's property, like building a house. Be careful what you believe too, from private companies and from public power districts. They will not always tell you the whole truth and nothing about the truth. I can say, the project, the water farm project's out of here. That's enough to say everything about a huge project like this. Thank you.
My name is Anne Mandy Warren and I reside in Cherry County. I have a residence there, own property, and our company also owns property in Lincoln County. I wasn't sure with what I wanted to share with you today or I fed in. I have to commend you commissioners in Cherry County. We requested a survey by our residents and it couldn't be done. They just wouldn't do it. So good for you for checking with your constituents. Applauding. I'm curious, when you do your research for your setbacks, rather than checking with the counties around you, do you check with the people who live in the shadow of the wind turbines? That's where we, in Cherry County, many of us who have been researching these for seven years, we went, we went to the people. And it's, it's pretty surprising. And I guarantee you, five miles is not enough. This handout I gave you all was in the Valentine newspaper, the Midland News, September 6th, on the back page. I was shocked a newspaper would print such an article. And the truth be known, it needs to be on the front page of every newspaper in Nebraska, every newspaper in the United States. And if I can, I'd like to read that so others can enjoy the benefit of this article as well. EU, which is the European Union Climate Tyranny, a warning for American ag states. That's the headline of this article. Congressman Mike Flood issued a statement following recent action by the European Parliament imposing restoration targets on 20% of the European Union's land and seas by 2030. Over the weekend, a New York Times profile detailed the stories of European farmers grappling with the fallout of European Union climate policy. Europeans are living on the front lines of climate tyranny that is destroying their way of life, of their farm families, while putting the continent's food security at risk. Their ag producers are being pushed to shrink herds, shift production, and even to shut down their operations forever. Their story should serve as a warning to Americans. This is what happens when Green New Deal extremists take over. The EU is putting their own future at risk to appease activists pushing policies that's destabilizing food chains. Even as Ukraine, the red basket of Europe, remains under the siege by Russia. America doesn't have to follow the European model. Fight against Biden's 30-by-30 land grab started here in Nebraska. And early opposition has helped raise awareness about the consequences of federal land controls. Furthermore, Nebraska has long innovated to better conserve our natural resources to ensure that we feed ourselves and the world while stewarding our resources more efficiently. To secure our future, we need to empower producers to innovate towards sustainable solutions rather than caving to the demands of climate extremists. We want to rewild land. Correlation here, it's always been, been here and now we're finally starting to see it. There's a correlation between the 30-30 land grab and this climate control. Epoch Times just came out with a documentary on our land being taken out of food production. I recommend you all see it, it's pretty scary.
Hello, my name is Robert Byrne from Spaulding, Nebraska. I know I'm a ways out of my territory, but I was asked here by a fellow rancher and I've been involved with these projects in several counties, including Wheeler. And I live in Wheeler County. And there we had End Energy come in and propose 27 towers. They got a permit, they put them up. One of the members on the zoning board changed his mind after that. Come out opposing of it because they had some ill effects. They went to five-mile setbacks in Wheeler County because of that. The only issue that I had here with the young lady bringing up that it won't replace the coal, well, they lobbied the legislature to the point where they are replacing coal. They're mandating that we have to take on green energy by a certain level by a certain year. And that is why I remained with Nebraska recently when I was hauling water to my windmill because they weren't pumping water. They were hauling diesel fueling generators to those, to generate electricity because Nebraska Public Power had to purchase. When it made more sense to call Gentleman Jim and say, crank out some more energy? No, they actually hauled four generators into that station and started, please, please, please look into it and find out for yourself. Sad situation. Bullet point, Stanford University offshore research on how it reduces energy from a frontage. Very proud of the research. They can reduce hurricane frontage energy by 70% offshore wind. We don't want to reduce the energy in our frontages that are coming through this state. That's a fact. Stanford University offshore wind energy. Department of Nebraska Revenue, take a look at their website. You'll get a true factor on what you actually get returned back from the nameplate tax. They tell you, they base it on 100% of production. It's never there, 40% is accurate. They tell us in Greeley County, the county we just got done with, which I operate in, that we were going to reach $640,000 on 41 towers. After the Department of Revenue furnished me with the information on every county, how many wind towers per county, averaged out from wind towers in the state, it figures out 6,000 per tower. That's 240,000 plus. So they're just inaccurate on their information. Please go to the Nebraska Department of Revenue and look that up. They'll give you several years of that. Develop your own finding of facts. These gentlemen walk in the years and they'll give you their finding of facts. And what you're doing is really blowing my mind here today. You guys are great compared to some of the counties I've been involved in. You are finding the facts and I appreciate that. Decommissioning in Greeley County, we had forced them to put up $300,000 per tower. All right, not in a bond. That bond's useless. And one of the things it was useless for in Antelope County were End Energy. They took out a bridge. The gentleman needed to combine his corn and couldn't for a year and a half because they couldn't get to the bottom of how they were going to fix the bridge. So we forced them to put $17 million, 300,000 per tower plus, plus another 5 million for roads and bridges, in a bank in the county to access when we needed to do something. I like that idea. The interest then is compounded for inflationary costs. Cost per kilowatt, you cannot compare the two. With our project there proposed by Next Air, which is a China-based company, it's very similar to End Energy. The cost per kilowatt equivalent on a 20-year term to $300 per kilowatt. How can we possibly justify 12 cents per kilowatt cost to a painter at age of 300? It's just not feasible. And just simply take the cost of a proposed project, take the 20-year term and figure it out. Add the decommissioning in there and see where you come up with. We can't do it, it won't function. Do your own property value analysis. Don't live on nerves. You've got plenty of good men in this county and in this state that will actually tell you what has happened and what has affected. that will actually tell you what has happened and what is affected by these, when it comes to property values. Don't take a chance on decreasing them. Health effects, health effects are really a sad situation to me because I've got a child that's of special needs. We start talking about autistic children. One in 3,000 autistic children in 1970, one in 36 today, one in three by 2030. An autistic child cannot handle the pressure from this thing within three miles of pending windfall. Look that up, take the time and do the research. You've got a growing community here, you're going to have more issues there. Be concerned about that. John Glenn Weaver, running for the U.S., 30 years military in surveillance Pentagon, said any time that a company involved with China is involved with this wind tower, with the new system they have on it with a 10-mile radius light is a surveillance system. John Glenn Weaver, communicate with him, ask him these questions, he will give it to you. John Glenn Weaver. North American Bird Conservancy gives you a really good display. Thank you.
Yes, sir. You have, I would like to get some more card or something later if you could leave it, maybe the gentleman in the back room or something back there.
I'll do it, thank you.
If anybody else has information that the state can use for the information, thank you.
I'm Richard Reimer, live at 4980 West State Farm Road. And first of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you as a Board of Commissioners for the time and energy you put into administering the business of the county. And I'd like to thank my district supervisor or commissioner, as well as I would like to thank Mr. Hughley for the years of service he's put into the county. In relation to the setbacks, I had a lot of thought about that. And I came up with a conclusion, suggested proposal in those, the current and the proposed setbacks that you have should be lengthened out. And my suggestion is that we need a setback of 50 miles. That would eliminate anyone in the county being affected by these commercial operations. In regard to the, and this kind of has to do with both the solar and the wind generators. I feel that these commercial companies are coming in, they're coming into areas like Lincoln County or wanting to come into areas like Lincoln County because they feel they can have low input and get a high output on them. And we all know that most of the energy that would be generated in the county would probably all be sent out to areas where they can get the most money out of it. And so then the county is stuck with what's left here. And what I'm saying is that when you go in and you develop these companies or these companies develop these sites, they disturb the ground. And as you all know, we get a lot of weeds and vegetation growth and disturb ground. And this affects the neighbors, surrounding area, the landscape. Mostly we get a lot of thistle tumbleweeds and kosha weeds and those are prolific. And they blow around and they distribute their seeds as they blow around all winter long. And we just continue to have that problem from that extra seed. The wind turbines are damaging to wildlife, particularly the birds, any waterfowl or birds, some of the endangered species, sandhill cranes, whooping cranes, songbirds, all of these are affected by those turbines. And I feel that if a commercial company comes in, that they should be held responsible for the liability on the damage they do to the birds, the surrounding areas, the landscape. We know it affects, the noise from these affects people's health. And I'm sure it affects livestock health as well. And I feel that, again, that these commercial companies should be held responsible for the liability on weeds and on the damage to the wildlife and the birds. And also feel that the commissioners should take some responsibility in that as well, that they make sure that things are being taken care of by these companies. And I guess with that, you know where I stand on this. I'm not really very much informed for these companies coming in. So you can call me opinionated, that's okay. Thanks. Where do we start?
Sounds good. Okay, I better get my piece in before Matthew loses it completely here. Okay, David Hibner, rural Lincoln County. I think Mr. Reimer nailed it there. Most constituents today in the survey have indicated that they want the setback to be the county line. I know that it takes a lot of time to digest all this information. But I might humbly suggest a motion today by you all to extend the moratorium for a term of years. I think that's been expressed clearly and overwhelmingly. But just to recap the policy side, foreign components brought in from, made in Asia, floated over the ocean, transported to Nebraska by an out-of-state trucking company, erected by an out-of-state construction company, owned by German, Japanese, Spanish power company, funded by the federal government, resulting in few jobs. Landowners might make some money, but everyone else has to put up with it. So please consider a motion to extend the moratorium today. I would suggest three to five years, 10 would be fantastic. But I think Mr. Hughley had a good idea to table it as well. But honestly, I think people are, including myself, are itching for action. We don't want to have to bug y'all again in a month and go over all the points. I don't think regulations are what we're looking for, we're looking for a moratorium. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Lincoln County Commissioners. I'm Maryl Rhodes, I live north of Thetford and I live in the southeast corner of Cherry County. I'm here to testify against all industrial wind and industrial solar in Lincoln County. There are many reasons why these are not needed in Lincoln County or across the state of Nebraska, which I will give those reasons at the end of my testimony if time permits. I would like to give you a few facts on the effects on your county roads from putting in industrial wind farm. While I give you these facts, think about how this will affect your roads in Lincoln County. As we all know, it is taxpayers' dollars that you use to maintain your county roads. If a proposed wind facility has 19 towers, here is a breakdown of what it takes to construct them. This is 19 wind towers. 400 yards of cement for each foundation per tower. 10 yards per truckload equals 40 cement trucks per tower. 75,000 pounds of rebar per tower. Two truckloads per tower. Components of each tower will have stands and blades, which equals eight trucks per tower. Wiring and components for feeder lines equal one truckload per tower. That's 51 trucks per tower. These are semi-trucks. Times 19, that's 969 truckloads. Trucks needed for construction of the entire project. A large unassembled crane equals eight trucks. Trucks needed for excavation, dozers and trenchers, equals six trucks. Now we have 983 total trucks. This does not include all the trucks needed to build the roads inside the facility. To build roads to handle this kind of traffic and heavy loads, it will take at least another 60 semi-loads of road material per mile. 60 loads times 12 miles equals 720 truckloads. Now this is only for 19 towers. It was stated in the North Platte newspaper, wind company RWE has a project that they would like to require 50 wind turbines. This is not an approved CUP, as I understand. This is only a proposed of 50 towers. Stop and think what this will cost Lincoln County for maintenance on their county roads. Do you have that kind of money when these wind turbines will not be bringing money into your county? Or yes, you will hear, you will have people here to construct the towers, but that is only during a time of construction, that is not for years to come. A few more things you as commissioners need to think about, how harmful this is for your county, that are factual reasons. Number one thing that has not been brought up today, do you realize what this is going to do to your water, to the aquifer? Our water here is so precious in the state of Nebraska. This, from all the cement that they use for their foundations, there is going to be all sorts of toxic going into our water. Erosion in the county are some other factors. Damage to the Okalala Aquifer by leaching the materials and chemicals, ruin the natural and scenic beauty of Lincoln County. Health problems to humans, health problems to cattle and horses. You ask me why, how do we know this? Cattle cannot reproduce under these wind turbines or along the power lines. These are really things, this is a beef country. We need to stop and think about this. It's harmful to the birds, bats, and other wildlife in the area. Local fire departments are not qualified to put wind turbine fires out. Please look into all of these things when you are thinking this. You will, by searching www.windturbines.com, you will find written testimony from people all over the world to prove these facts. I hope you as commissioners take each testimonial today and weigh it out and see what the percentage of Lincoln County residents are not for wind in the county. Please vote against any conditional use permit that comes before you on the industrial wind in Lincoln County. Thank you for listening to my testimony. I'm sure you all wonder, how do you know these things? I'm from Cherry County, I've been fighting this for eight years and it's not easy. And these people here are asking you to make a decision for them. They voted you into this place and believe me, I can see they have some very good commissioners here. It's hard.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you ma'am.
My name is Dewan McLean, lifelong resident, Lincoln County, 20099 North Highway 83 North, Nebraska. I'd like to amend my signature on the previous public hearing. I put 10-3 and it should have been 10-2, I was the top of the page there. Lady and gentleman, I'd like to extend my gratification to all of you for holding this public hearing, both public hearings. As you've heard from the public in the back in the past, it's very commendable and you all were elected to serve on this, five member county commissioners for a reason and your concern and your service to the county is among those. I conduct farm and ranch real estate business and I have served, excuse me, I have researched many properties in the area and I've researched properties in Custer and Webster County also. Those counties have been mentioned earlier that the setbacks in those counties are minimal. And in my conversations with landowners near those wind farms, they have major concerns about noise pollution and the unsightliness of the wind turbines, even though it has been considered that they are very beautiful against the blue sky. It is also a concern about how they're going to reduce their personal, or their property value as time moves on. It is my, I'm against the development of wind farms in Lincoln County. It is my opinion that the wind turbines are unsightly and they do create a nuisance for the public and without government subsidies, they are very inefficient. I also conduct a lot of real estate business in Lincoln County and the rumored wind project that is going to be possibly proposed to the county in eastern Lincoln County. I do have clients and customers with recreational land on the Platte River and they have expressed concerns about how that would affect the waterfowl migration if those wind turbines were placed on the northern side of the valley. There was an expert that spoke earlier here today that also expressed those same concerns and it would be good to have more information from him about that opportunity if it was to come about. This is a concern that should be throughout the whole county because with the Platte River system flowing through the whole county and it's a waterfowl migration harbor for the birds that are migrating through the country because of the feed source and the bodies of water. Well, these wind turbines that possibly could go up in northern Lincoln County, how that will affect the migration of the waterfowl. I encourage, I encourage our future, or excuse me, I encourage you to consider our future generations when you consider proposing these setback regulations. Those individuals that choose to call Lincoln County home for full time, not just as they own land here and want to take advantage of an opportunity that is here. Who's going to be the authority to determine whether or not a wind turbine needs to be dismantled? Who's going to have that? Who's going to have that authority to tell those wind generation companies that they need to remove those wind turbines? I'm sure that's going to happen after all of you have served on this board. It's not going to be for the decision for you guys to make, it's going to be the decision for someone in the future to make. That should probably be denoted in your regulations. I believe that the proposed regulations may not go far enough. It was also mentioned by one of the testimonies earlier that Dawson County is three miles. Maybe we ought to adopt that three miles. While I think fifty miles might be a little strong, I think three miles, from the testimony earlier, that would eliminate any kind of proposed wind farm opportunities in Lincoln County. Property rights are important, and as I've mentioned before, you were elected to consider the property rights of all individuals in the county. That's why we need regulations. As one individual mentioned before, we just need to take it all on a case-by-case basis. I'm sure Judy would really like that, and we could hold weekly public hearings on any project that was coming in without regulations in the county. I implore you to consider keeping your setbacks as proposed, or maybe a little bit stronger when it comes to wind generation farms.
Mr. Luzon, guess I caused all this problem here today, part of it. My advice would just use a little common sense here. I think, I think we need every kind of energy, but in its own deal, and the reason I considered it, it was a spot we have, it isn't going to bother much anybody. I'd invite all of you to go look with me, but use a little common sense on this. Four-mile deal or two-mile deal, it's going to kill the project. If that's what you want, well, that's what we'll do, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to this little kid. Thank you.
Mr. Luzon?
Yes?
Can, how many neighbors do you, in the area that you've talked in our Commission and?
Well, me and my sister have, and there's some other neighbors that are already signed up and in, thirty sections. Depends how, and how many, but, you know, where they, the towers, you know?
Just you?
Just me?
Yes. How many acres do you have?
About twelve thousand.
And how long has that been in your family?
Part of it was inheritance, and I bought some through the years, added to it.
And so if we go with?
I rent my sister's ground.
If we go with the proposed setbacks, will you be able to decide for your land what you can do with it?
Sure, I think so. I think I'd be part of the process there. Engineers, engineers would decide where they want to put the, put the wind turbines, but yeah, I'm sure they would listen to me. Harry Haythorn sitting back here, he has another thirty sections recited. He's got wild horses instead on his, but I don't think he's against it. And we have the big three hundred and forty-five thousand volt power lines, I've got two of them running through the ranch, so they're already there. I just thought this one just kind of fit. But I would look at, I would look at each project to see. I'd invite you all down to take a look. It's quite a ride up there.
What with, with the?
Monkey.
With the?
Bow.
Yes, proposed. We haven't got that far. We've had, I went through the planning commission, and we have wind metering towers up there. They've been there for five years or something. And I also say that's one of the best spots they've ever put them. I don't know, just use your common sense, see how this goes. I wouldn't hurry on the decision because nothing's going to happen quick. Let's work it out.
Thank you. Mr. Luzon, got a quick question for you. Your sections are grand, and again, not trying to talk about particular projects, I'm just trying to gauge where you are in the county. How close are you to Maxwell Road where it bends and has, and eastbound, or north of Maxwell?
It'd be south of there, north of the highway, two, three miles where it starts.
North of the highway?
Yeah, halfway, halfway between Brady and Maxwell.
Okay.
I should be glad to show it all of you. I think, I think it's a special place, if there is one.
My name is Carly Howling. I'm with Invenergy. Invenergy is a U.S.-based developer of renewable energy projects across the country. In Nebraska specifically, we've developed five operating wind projects in three counties. I've heard a lot of good questions and concerns today, and would love to be able to address all of them, but there is a time limit. So I do want to, to mention that a lot of the concerns that were raised, shadow flicker, health effects, noise concerns, a lot of that is addressed currently in the ordinances that are with Lincoln County. And as part of the development process for wind projects, we conduct a lot of studies, a lot of environmental studies addressing a lot of the things that were mentioned today as well. If there are any specific concerns that you guys have questions about, I'd be happy to attest to them. I'm here today to voice concerns. The setbacks proposed would prevent wind development in Lincoln County. When we look for ideal sites for wind projects, one of the first things we usually look at are the wind regulations in that county, and those regulations do tell us a lot upfront about whether or not a wind project would be possible. And a county with these setbacks that are proposed would be a huge barrier to any developer, would indicate that a wind project wouldn't be feasible anywhere in the county regardless of the wind resource or the landowners that may or may not want to participate in the wind project. The setbacks would mean that Lincoln County would miss out on the benefits that wind projects bring, which is what I'd like to spend the rest of my time highlighting. One of the most significant benefits that wind projects bring is tax revenue. In the state of Nebraska, the biggest source of tax revenue from wind projects is what's called the nameplate capacity tax. This is three thousand five hundred eighteen dollars per megawatt. This is a guaranteed annual source of revenue that goes to the counties that have operating renewable energy projects. So for example, if Lincoln County had a total of four hundred megawatts of projects installed, it would bring the county about one point four million dollars per year. This would be a very substantial increase in revenue for the county. That would not require any kind of tax hike for residents. According to the Advanced Power Alliance of Nebraska, almost every county where wind projects have been built finds that these projects become the biggest financial supporters of public schools. They can also directly support emergency services as well as road maintenance wherever needed. On top of that, developers also improve county roads both before and after wind projects are constructed at new possitive county or to the residents. Property values in and around wind energy projects have been studied, and the data shows no negative effects on property values. Last year, Antelope County received the second-most revenue from nameplate capacity tax, due mostly to the operating projects we've developed there. The one point five six million dollars they received last year was possible in part because of the reasonable setbacks they've established, which keep residents happy while also ensuring continued benefits from renewable energy projects. I understand and I appreciate that Nebraska's an agricultural state. I grew up on a cattle ranch in Oklahoma, and so on a personal level, it's very important to me that that is able to continue. It is a vital service to our country. And that is a big reason why I work in wind energy, because it is compatible and complementary to ag and ranching. Landowners continue to own their land and use their land. Farming can continue right up to the gravel around the turbine. Livestock are free to roam around turbines safely. Landowners can use the access roads that are installed. Our focus is in improving the county and lives of residents, not disrupting them. Wind energy brings income and jobs to local residents, as well as significant revenue to the county. If these proposed setbacks are passed, it would stop renewable energy developers from investing millions into the local economy. We believe it's in the best interest of Lincoln County to allow landowners the freedom and opportunity to decide for themselves whether or not to participate in wind energy. Thank you.
Couple of questions, I'll fill by me.
Sure.
You said that you are Invenergy, a U.S.-based company. Is it wholly owned by a U.S. company, or is it invested in the city area of the program?
We have Canadian investors, but it is majority here.
Okay. Second question I have, you say that these proposed changes would pass, that it would, that it would stop all renewable energy projects with wind and solar from occurring in Lincoln County. Is that factual, or is that just conjecture?
These setbacks would prevent wind projects.
Would it stop them, or just make it a little bit more difficult as far as what may already be in process as far as leaseholds being signed?
I believe it would stop them.
Okay. I differ on that opinion, but question about windmills, because you work for companies, an expert in this industry, I would assume as you're testifying here today. Questions about, do windmills catch on fire? We had somebody give testimony earlier about where it's going to be. How often does that happen?
It is very rare, but it does happen.
Okay. Another question that I have is straight voltage. What is that?
I am not sure.
Okay. I've heard that there is straight voltage associated with wind generation and transmission lines that they have. Somebody else comes up to testify, and they have that answer, and like that, that is interesting. So perhaps if we get through everyone's comments, Michigan, nobody has other additional questions. Perfect.
That's it? Okay.
Good afternoon. I'm John Childers. I live half the way from here to Stapleton, adjacent to U.S. Highway eighty-three, where I watch turbine blades go south, go north, and pass each other many, many times a week. Presumably, those going south are headed to Wyoming, to the graveyard of blades, which, by my reading, I understand, those blades will never, never, in the time of eternity, deteriorate and decompose and go back into the earth. They will be buried there forever. Washington has saddled this country, your grandchildren, and your great-grandchildren with a debt to pay off the subsidies that they provide to put in those machines we were talking about this morning that I'm not supposed to talk about, and the wind turbines. The only way that they're to be put in is by tax incentives. They're not economical themselves, to my understanding. For you people to be really capable of voting on this subject, I recommend highly that you take a drive to Lamar, Colorado, or Lethal, Kansas. Get out of your car and spend a half an hour listening and observing these wind machines. Not only do they kill all of the flying animals that these people have testified, but all of the deer and all of the coyotes vacate this area. They cannot and will not live in the area of these wind turbines. It has a major effect on wildlife. You can't do anything about what Washington has done on this tax incentive deal, except to vote properly the next time, but you can have something to do with what goes on in Lincoln County. And maybe you should figure out a way to put this to a vote of the population, rather than the five of you deciding what's going to happen. Maybe the voting public in this county ought to vote what they want. Because I doubt very, very seriously if the people that have testified for the energy companies, or the few landowners that have testified, I doubt very, very seriously if they would go build their two-hundred-thousand-dollar house within a quarter mile, a half mile of these wind turbines and live there. Ain't going to happen. I was going to recommend a twenty-mile setback, but I was outbid by fifty, and so I'm going to second the motion of fifty miles. These things are a disaster, and I hope you'll find some way to keep them out of our county. Thank you.
I know you guys, Kathy Crawford, Hershey, Nebraska, you guys are very admirable in what you're doing, and you have so, so, so much to take in, to figure out what's going on here. And you can't make decisions on emotional things, but dang it, don't take a good life out of Nebraska. I really think that, gosh, a fifty, a fifty-tower, a fifty-tower wind farm is not, is not who we are. Thank you.
I'm Ron Markrash, a resident in Lincoln County. I also work for Mr. Luzon. And I'm glad she mentioned that, because that's one point that nobody has brought up. RWE is not coming in and building hundreds of wind towers. It's not going to be a massive farm. We're talking private property, you know, thousands and thousands of acres, one here or there. And migratory birds, I very much move the environment. This is something we have discussed with them, and they want. They have had people come in, do soil checks. They are going to replenish the land, everything that's around these. They are maintaining the roads, building the roads, doing all of this. We have discussed with neighbors, neighboring ranches, the effects to them, what they feel about them. Everybody has talked together about this. If somebody right next to us does not want a wind turbine, they have agreed that they think it's still a good idea if they want to run roads or even power lines under the property. They have agreed to it. It would all be on contract, everybody's separate. Migratory birds, nobody says anything, all eagles. We have many. I love being out working and seeing them. They have studied. They go out there and they check the nesting areas. They make sure that any place one of these turbines is going to be is not anywhere near any nesting areas. They've studied the sandhill cranes, their flight paths. So these are a lot of the questions that I have brought up as far as vanishes and concern for the environment. I think this is a very good thing, not just for the farmers and ranchers, but but for our future also. So, yes, we, there's a few topics. Some people had, you know, brought up good things. RWE has guaranteed, you know, everybody will have contracts on this. It's individual, so I gotta admit, I would not want to see, you know, a hundred some wind turbines in one area. That to me would, I don't like seeing that. One here or there, I think is gonna bring in some good energy to us. And yet, gonna be so far out that I can't imagine hardly any of them I would be seeing. So, just wanted to voice my opinion and I appreciate your time.
Can you name one more time, right?
Ronette Markgraf.
Thank you.
What was her last name?
Markgraf, M-A-R-K-G-R-A-F.
Did you address, you said you work for Mr. Lewstrom?
Yes.
And so with the proposed, with the existing setbacks, would you be able to participate in the program, in the development?
I'm concerned, yes, you know, many cattle, there's some concern about being able to get to and from, which we have found this all to benefit. They're gonna build and maintain these roads, which is gonna make it so much easier for us to get out there and take care of our windmills, the cattle, and fencing around them so that there's no danger to the animals there. Coyotes, well, you know, we have to pay people to come out and eliminate them. We had areas where they were a little further away, it'd be kinda nice, but there's still so much room for them. I mean, I love the wildlife. I love seeing it every day when I'm out there working. It is a concern of mine, so I have asked many, many questions. And they have come up with answers. We've had people study this. I've been impressed with that. I have.
I'm Sean Doyle. I'm manager for Mark Bluestrom Ranch. And the question you just asked, ma'am, is, no, that's way too much. Ground distance in between buildings. Cause our ranch, it's narrow at the bottom and goes up, then it widens out. And we're up next to another ranch, which he was here a little bit, gonna have to leave, Harry Hethel. They own a township all the way around us. And the only thing on the other side of us would be the Brady Road, straight north of Brady. And the thing I like about it is the school, what the schools can get out of it. My daughter's a teacher. She claims she don't make enough. And my granddaughter wants to be a teacher. So if that money go back into schools, it'd be great, that tax money, or, you know, they have them however. But we can't go that distance with them towers because the ground is not wide enough. You know what I mean? Cause the section is only 648, so that's a mile wide, mile by mile. So if you got 20 sections, you know, you ain't gonna get, you're gonna have to spread them towers out. And like our deal, it's a straight shot through our whole pasture right to where they're wanting to put them. They'd be driving, wouldn't be on a county road. They'd go right off our, our deal in there. So that's the, you know, everybody's talking about county roads. But it ain't gonna tear up none because we're gonna be on us. And they'll be on their road. The one thing we'd be on really would be Highway 30 to get into us. And your question earlier, we're right in between Max One Brady, West Pawnee Road, Haythorn Drive is where we're, where we're right in between. And I think that's about what I know.
So you say that the setbacks would be too much. My understanding there's a provision for waiver from any landowners. Is that out of question?
That would be, that would help on that deal, yes. The other guy, we're gonna be close to no buildings or nothing.
So the proposed setbacks could still work if you were to get a waiver from your joint landlord?
Yes, sir.
Do you feel comfortable giving that power to your laborer?
Yes. Because like I said, they're, they're all for big ranch all the way around, just Haythorn Ranch. Harry was here, but he had to leave and he was gonna do the speaking. So, and then the rest of it is pretty much Mark Bluestrom's family and Rodney Roberts is here just a little bit.
Because it's gonna affect some other people, I'm just telling us true. I would like to ask a question of duty as it relates to this question in front of this man, something about heat. Could you add now? Judy, would you just come up? And I just, you brought up something in my mind I hadn't thought about, so. Not necessarily towards a hay farm because you do have roads up there somewhere. I'm kidding. It's not like we have a section road, every section up or I would have. Because if we did, where I would have, even if, even if, let's say I own three sections. A county road goes through it, does that start a wood? It probably because the county road, that's telling you, you have to continue it. I understand if there were no roads and you had 10 sections up, you could block these things all the way down. What happens when a county road starts getting through those? Cause that's another property line. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We would treat this project, or a project, if there's multiple sections, probably as an aggregate project, which means if, if they're abutting each other. Now, if they're way separate, one here, one here, then it's, it's gonna be a little bit different. But if you have a county road that goes through there, you're still gonna have to meet your setbacks from your county road, at least from, from that area. But the county road setback is minimal.
Somebody says property line, because that is a property.
Right. There is a county road, like a county road right away. You have to be one and a half times the total height away from it. So you're, I think they're 280 feet maybe, so, I mean, you're looking about 500 feet away from the county.
So with that said, Judy, explain to me with the existing setbacks. I'm really struggling with that. Some of the conversations that have been had with me, these are fairly sizable landowners who's owned this land for decades, if not a century. Who, would they, with their existing properties, would they be, if they so choose to participate in a development, would, would they be able to?
With the existing setbacks?
With, with both, the existing setbacks and then the proposed setbacks.
That's gonna be really hard to answer because you've got the waiver consideration, you've got the setback consideration and who their neighboring property owners are. So with the setback that would have been back in 2020, it's setbacks for your aggregate project from property lines to a residential, occupied residential structure is five times the total height of the tower. So wherever that tower's located, but, but you base it off of property lines of it as a whole. So I'm not gonna measure tower per tower. I'm gonna measure from that section. Okay? And you're gonna go out, what's 280 times five, 1,400 feet, about 1,400 feet from that property line to the nearest occupied dwelling is gonna be where it is. So in an area where you have a couple of sections, more than likely, if you don't have a lot of really close neighbors, that one's probably gonna be pretty easy. The two-mile setback is gonna prove a little bit more difficult because we do allow people to build houses on their properties, homes on their properties. So now you're gonna have to go essentially, this section is going to have the towers on it. You're gonna have to go two sections over before you can run into an occupied dwelling unit. Okay? So that could get a little tough on all sides to see where that's at, but you do have that waiver in there. So if there's an occupied dwelling a mile and a half away, you can go to that person, whoever the developer is, can go to that person and say, hey, we wanna build this. Are you opposed? They can sign a waiver, be done, and you can do it. So does it make it more difficult with the increased setbacks? Yes. Because your chances of running into an occupied dwelling unit within that two-mile section, two-mile area is, is gonna be a little bit more.
And, and again, the waiver can only be issued by the, the person who is neighboring you.
The property owner, whoever that property owner is. So if they have a rental and they're renting that house out to somebody, that renter cannot say, nope, I'm not giving it to you. It is the property owner. The property owner and the, whoever the owner is of the commercial project, they would have to get into an agreement and say, yeah, you can build there.
So what I'm hearing, my concern, just to be totally honest with you, is what I'm hearing that is that my neighbor has more say-so over what I can do with my property than I do.
Could one neighbor kill the project? Yes, one neighbor could kill the project.
If it doesn't comply with the regulations.
That is correct. Yes, yes.
Hi guys. My name is Jimmy Schler. I am with RWE. I am a right-of-way agent, so I deal with landowners directly with wind, solar, battery storage, all of them, mainly wind. Some of the things that you're just talking about, I'd like to address. Setback distances really have to do with population density. So as we look at it as a whole, yeah, it's, it's doable in that, in the fact that you've got that mile and a half, that two-mile setback. The problem with, with it is, as far as a buildable project, most of that power is ran underground. You can't build a project that is spread out, you know, 20, 30 miles. Because you start putting those turbines so far apart, you begin to completely destroy the demographic, or not the demographic, but the overall design of the project. So you get outside of that overall, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. That overall design, that gets too costly. Underground cabling is very expensive and you get to stretch those out too far. You just totally ruin the overall design of that project, feasibility of doing it. So therefore, anything above 20, 2,000, 2,500 feet, just kinda gets kinda tough. It is, you know, you, you know, your two-mile thing, when Harley answered, you know, that that was probably not feasible. That's what she said, that's what she meant. And it applies more than just those setbacks from the houses. It has to do a lot more with how that power is gathered and got back to the substation. Okay? So, yes, a two-mile, three-mile, you know, the guys have said 20 miles, 50 miles, that's irrational. It doesn't really make any sense after a certain point. It doesn't matter. So, yes, you can, you can kill a project with too much setback. And it's not about the setback of the turbines, it's about the overall design, the layout of the projects. And did I explain that well enough?
That's one of the parts, some of the concerns that were shared with me. And Judy was having a hard time understanding the big picture.
Sorry, I'm getting nervous. I can sit and talk to lenders all day long and I get in a public setting. I'm gonna get diggers, but. Yeah, go ahead.
Looking for more comparisons, is the setback weighed against the potential dwelling height of that of the project? You're saying through the project, because of the dollars it sends to the company, what they would have to spend, infrastructure and?
Sure, yeah. I mean, you, you know, as, as they've kinda talked before, you've, you've, you've got the amount of money that you can spend to produce that kilowatt, okay? So, or that megawatt, the ball down, the ball line is not feasible. It becomes a, a cost, non-cost effective because you've getting, you're getting, it takes, I, sorry, I don't remember the numbers it takes to put a cable on the ground to get between those towers. The next problem would be if it was feasible, you can only run underground cabling seven, I don't wanna get specific because I don't want specific, seven, eight miles. Probably, probably more realistically, six to seven miles. So you get above that and you get that spread, that project spread out over that, then you're forcing them to come above ground and, and start doing above ground line to get to that collection station to do that. And then to a certain point, that getting spread out becomes non-effective cost-wise.
So then to follow up to your point about burying these cables, so if a project were to be authorized hypothetically in sand, those cables would be buried between the towers?
Correct, yeah. Most of your, most of your, most of your collection lines on wind is underground. That way there's not, you know, above ground lines run all over the place. So they go from, they'll, they'll, they'll set a group of six or seven towers and they'll run them together and then that'll whole run to the substation. So they try to get the substation somewhat centered in that project area and then bring that power in from all those different other ways. Okay? So when you get those setbacks and start forcing those towers apart, that becomes a big play in the overall cost of the project.
So it's not just ground disturbance to the foundation of where the tower is lying, it's also disturbance in the ground where the cables.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it becomes, you know, again, not, not cost effective because of, because of the overall size of the project. It gets spread out too far.
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Keeper, what I wanted to say is hopefully, because we do have a question, since I'm not going to guess this, I had it on my question, hopefully, so.
It is not, it's off the clock.
Thank you.
I would point out, folks, in energy, you are, you are here for work. The public is taking office, we're gonna make commentary. So if we could, if you get here to call the commentary.
If he has a question, I'll answer it quickly as I can.
I'll ask, let's say we have 80 square miles, eight by 10, okay? Or not?
No, eight, eight, 80 square miles, 80 square miles, okay.
Three pieces of ground, one landlord, okay? Maybe two landlords.
Gets rid of setbacks.
What, what, but what I understand, why these setbacks probably were not going to have a lot of dwellings other than people working for the landlords out there. They're gonna be, you know, people that work for him on those big ranches. They're not somebody because he owns it. So what difference, the design of the, the design of the tower doesn't, don't your towers have to be so far apart in a logical design setup of the wind anyway?
Exactly. And that's why when I started my statement, I stated that it really boils down to population density.
Oh, thank you.
So with population density, you don't have a, is it gonna be close enough to our, our building chains or our urban standards?
I don't know what your, your setback is from small cities, large cities. A lot of times you got, you got airspace that plays into where turbines can go. There's a lot of things that create other setbacks. You have your setbacks from power lines, you have your setback from your roads. And a correction on that too, since we brought that up. Your, your setback from county roads is one times the height of the tower. So in the instance, if we used a, a 4.5 megawatt tower somewhere in that range, you're looking at like a 600-foot, 650-foot setback. Okay? looking at like a six-hundred-foot, six-hundred-fifty-foot setback, okay? Typically, towers when they're placed will have, um, a setback from fall distance away from each other. Side by side, it would be one and a half north and west, depending on the wind direction of, of this area. It's, it's usually like three times the distance to let the wind regroup to where it gets to that next set of towers.
That's what I was getting at, so yes, so our setbacks will affect that, that, I was trying to get to that design if you have to.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't keep notes. There was, there was other things that was brought up. Typically, I, I, I'm working at Project Niva, I don't know how this Nebraska easement is set up and stuff. Typically, our easements pay off of costs that are produced. So going back to the one gentleman's statement about how, uh, the efficiency of a turbine is and how that pays out to you and the county, uh, the efficiency of it, it, it's a big matter. They have to overcome that difference with their revenue, with how many turbines they put in and everything. But they normally pay off of generated, the generator, the plate number, like if it's a four-point-five, they usually pay off the, of what it can produce to the landowner, not what it does produce. So for that, therefore, that takes the equation out of everything for how a landowner is compensated for power production. They don't have to worry about that percentage of that turbine, what that turbine, if it's thirty percent, if it's fifty percent, it's not, it's not an issue of how, it's not an issue of how they get paid, okay? They usually get, no, most of the time they get paid off of the, of what that thing has produced when it comes from factories. If it says it's a five-point-o turbine, their compensation is evaluated off of that, not the thirty or the estimated amount of what it's actually producing. Yeah, I could go on, but it's good, thanks.
Hi, my name is Bryn Sharp, I'm from Hall County. Just a reminder, if, have you all Googled the Sand Hills? There's no place like it in the world. So why do we want to clutter it up with stuff that costs millions to put up, millions to take down? I, I leave Grand Island to come up here, to get away from all the clutter of town and the light poles, like coming out here. Do you look at the sky at night? Have you looked at the sky at night here? And have you looked at it ten miles north of town? It's beautiful. Why do we want to ruin that? Like, I love coming up here, I call it my spa. Like, it's, it's a great place to get away and just breathe. I mean, we should be thankful we live here and just enjoy the beauty of the land and what a special place we have. No place in the world is like it, the world. Like, that's pretty amazing to say you live somewhere, no place is like in the world. And then it's right here in Nebraska.
You know, I guess the, the question that I would maybe have for Judy or for all of you is, um, we're talking about the setbacks, and the setbacks for confinement operations is two miles, right? That's what you spoke to Kent, is that it's two miles? And we're a livestock-friendly designated county, so why would we have lesser requirements for wind energy than we would for agriculture in Lincoln County? You know, there's avenues, there's still been confinement operations that have been built with these setbacks, but they have to go get the input of their neighbors, that's what the waivers are for. That's an avenue that, hey, if it's good for me and it's good for my neighbors, this is still, and it's a viable project, and it's an avenue that's still, it, it doesn't block the progress. It does make it more difficult, and it is designed to make it more difficult. So why would we entertain having less stringent setbacks for wind or solar energy than we would for agriculture in Nebraska? So I would, you know, urge you to just kind of keep that in mind because that, like as Kent said, two miles in his, you know, in, in his personal experience, two miles wasn't enough. Uh, and, and these are going to have a lot more, there are a lot more visibility than two miles away from a V law. So with that, I appreciate your time and appreciate all your efforts.
Sharon Egger, Lincoln County, and my question is, uh, when the subsidies are all done and everybody has their money there, then who picks up the bills when these companies are all bankruptcy and gone? Um, is that going to be on the taxpayers? And then the other question is, when there's a county road that's close to one of these towers and the towers cause an accident, who pays for that accident? So, I mean, yes, we could get a lot of money into the county through the subsidies, but in the end, are our taxes going to go up when that, that's over? To cost the storage of these damaged blades and whatnot? And where are the statistics, the actual statistics of the dump sites that it's going to cause, and who's going to pay for those dump sites? And as far as the wildlife, I think we should stick with the experts, like Rick Wyndham, on his knowledge on the studies, instead of going off of who said this and they just make up something. I, I think we really need to watch our information and where the information's coming from. That's all I have, thank you.
Are you going to read evidence, ones that were submitted through email, or those are just submitted?
It's in the record.
I believe his intention was to have it read out loud, and he wanted the people to hear. And he intentionally reached out, and I think Donna would maybe volunteer to read it on his behalf? No? Because I don't think it's appropriate for me to do, but.
I can read it if you want me to read it.
It's in the record, so. There's a lot of loss going back.
Okay.
We all.
I think he felt there was a, of the general public, but they're open to it.
Anyone else?
Can I clarify something? You had said previously that.
I was about to say, I was about to go first.
Hi, Alex Chandler, spoke earlier, um, wrote for Montana, live in Denver, I work for Invenergy, we develop wind, solar, natural gas, and battery, just pointing clarification. I don't, you know, this is a lot of good discussion between landowners, people that live here, it's really important. I will take my full five minutes, main points I think we need to clarify, probably our single biggest, uh, point that makes this incredibly difficult to develop is the two-mile setback from property lines. If you drew a five-by-five kind of square, or square-mile thing, that'd be twenty-five square miles, and you get a property land, or property owner in the middle of that saying no, and that's, that's an impact of twenty-five square miles around that property, and that makes that incredibly difficult to develop around. So that's the main, just kind of point. I'd like to clarify, you know, the setbacks, you want to minimize or have no impact on your, your neighbors. And so the main impacts that wind has are, it makes a little bit of a noise when the torrents are spinning, and then generates shadow flicker. Once you get, and it does depend on how big the blades are, tall the towers are, lots of factors, um, there's experts that spend a lot of time, can't rule it out, generally once you get to about a half-mile, you've alleviated those issues. And your, your regs are good in the regard that you've got a regulation on noise impact to your neighbors. Fifty-five decibels is, um, it's quieter than a refrigerator running in the background. And your shadow flicker, you know, it's, it's not, I, I, I don't, I'm sorry, I haven't read it, but it's, um, all right, I've read it, but I forgot what the, my mind, but it's, those are good regs, you have on those, it's going to minimize or even eliminate impacts to neighbors. And so that's kind of where I leave it, the main point that we really, is the property line setback. That's having a landowner having an impact on someone else two miles away, and what impact does that turbine have on them? Kind of just hit those points, noise and shadow, you guys regulated for that. Thank you.
My name is Dan Estorant, I'm a landowner and resident of Lincoln County. I had no intention of speaking today until the previous speaker brought up something. Uh, one, one landowner in, uh, you know, with a project all the way around them is really faced with the possibility that they'll say this is for the public good and you get eminent domain. I've been through two situations of eminent domain. One of them, I run to the Nebraska State Supreme Court and I lost. I've made agreements with companies in two other instances where I was under the threat of eminent domain. Not always do you have the choice to be a part of these projects. And in today's political climate, you know, you got to face reality that Washington's telling you it's for the good of the country, whether it is or it isn't. And I guess that's all I got to say, except that a lot of times you get swept into these deals whether we want to be swept into them or not. Thank you.
See, now those, will we have a, can you clarify something?
Now that everyone's had their chance to make their little comment, yes, I think that's all I can offer.
Thank you.
If they have questions, we'll stop now.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, commissioners. I did want to clarify, since the question has been asked several times, we, at RWB, we did do a map based on the two-mile, two-point-five-mile setbacks, and what we did for that is we took our existing project boundary and we looked out two miles from there to say, okay, how many waivers would we need? That number is about thirty to thirty-five. So, you know, I mean, we, we've heard that Harry Haythorne is, is fine, probably, well, I can't speak for him, but we heard Sean speak to that. He's not the only landowner, and you don't know what the landowner relationships are for someone there who might say, oh, I don't want that person to have a wind turbine just because I don't like them. So it's, it's not just like, oh, there's some people who might do it, there's, there's a significant number within that two miles, and, and the project is canceled without those waivers. So I want to clarify that. I also really want to clarify that RWB and Invenergy, as independent power producers, we do not use eminent domain. Utilities use those, we do not use eminent domain. So if, if a land, if there's a section of land or, or any kind of parcel that's in the middle of our project, we can't put any infrastructure on it. It's, you know, we'll try to sign it up, that'd be the ideal, but if they, if they don't, we have to work around it, and that's something we're used to, we see that in every project, and then setbacks come in just to affect where we place the infrastructure with respect to that land. So I want to be very clear about that. A number of questions were also asked, and I can answer some of those, but I don't want to take too much time here. I can talk about collection line, stray voltage as well, but I, those are the two clarifications I wanted to make. Oh, you'd have me clarify? Okay. So stray voltage, we do get this question a lot, especially in areas of dairy farming. We, um, there's no stray voltage from wind farms, it's a closed system, it's tri-phase, and it just feeds into a substation. So there's no point in which it's shunted or, or, um, put into the ground. It's collected in the wind turbine, there's a small, um, I guess, I'm just going to call it a transformer box at the base, and that converts it and it goes in the collection line. It's an insulated cable, it's a three- to four-inch insulation around the cable, and that just goes to the, the switchyard and substation onto the grid. So it's a, it's a totally closed system. Yes, there is ground disturbance with collection line, we do have that, we understand it, our lease says that we return the ground to its original condition. So after you, you trench the collection line in there, you do have to replace the top soil. There'd be measures taken in this area for spandier soil. We have developed in areas that have sandy soil before, um, so you replace it, you do netting, whatever you need to. There is an impact on that for a couple of years, but it, it does return to normal eventually. So that is something that wind farms are used to in Texas, Oklahoma, row crop areas where you think it'd be more concerned with that kind of thing. It's just a common practice to, to bury the collection line and handle the soil and replace it.
Well, I, have you ever had that experience with blowouts in the Sand Hills? They're slightly different than, than a lot of topography throughout the country. I mean, the Sand Hills, nineteen eighty-four, they're designated as a national natural landmark. They're a pretty neat place, and ecology is pretty sensitive, so that's why I do have concerns about soil destruction, particularly in the Sand Hill region of Lincoln County. I'm not saying that projects aren't viable in other parts of the county, but I think there is some additional consideration in, in our Sand Hill.
Yeah, absolutely, I think additional consideration makes sense, and I think that that is something you would see in any application.
I do agree with that.
That you would see that in application, maybe you'd have a civil engineer report, you could have an ecology report. We, we've done, Rowan, you mentioned, we have done studies, we would propose, you know, if it's looking like this is a wind farm that can be developed, we would do another one to two years of on-the-ground studies. We would do soil pouring, we would have engineers weigh on, weigh in on that, and we would do on-the-ground spotting of species of concern. So it's, it's truly, and a lot of that, I heard that's mentioned too, a lot of that is federally regulated, and, and has to be something that we submit reports on and show that we did the due diligence to say, okay, here's a protected species, here's what we're going to do. is federally regulated and, and has to be something that we submit reports on and show that we did the due diligence to say, okay, here's a protected species, here's what we're going to do, or we're going to place the turbine to mitigate concerns. Here's the soil style, soil type or composition, and here's what we're going to do to develop with respect to that. And that's what we would submit to you in our application process.
Is that the standard federal environment that you're talking about?
It's a standard environmental report. It, it would be in EPA, might be part of it. I know Army Corps of Engineers is, and I know DNR and US Fish and Wildlife Service was the main ones. So there's that. Yeah, I, I think a lot of others have been addressed to, and other concern about fires, just for what it's worth, those fires are typically isolated to the turbine tower, just like mostly they are. And, and what happens is they just burn themselves out. So that's, that's what happens with those modern turbines that are equipped with smoke detections that once you see that a plastic is burning and there's smoke in there, they just immediately shut the blades. There's no active agitation. Any other questions?
Several people have mentioned concerns for the roads. Is there, maybe this is more of a question for Judy. There is language in the proposal that addresses using the roads and entailing their use and returning it.
Yes.
I know we had a big conversation about that with another big project that's going on in this county. And so I felt like the language was there for me. Do you guys are aware of that and, and honor that?
Yes, we have to in every area we develop. Usually we enter into a road use agreement and I don't believe that that specifically was noted in, in this ordinance, in this proposed language, but usually we do that. We identify our plans for survey, for pre-construction road survey. A lot of times we'll rebuild the roads prior to, well, most times actually, we will rebuild prior to construction so that we can handle the loads. And then the ordinance does have language about returning the roads into pre-construction condition.
Probably not the time for the conversation, but something we as a board want to think about talking to Judy with the county roads people. To get those turbine blades up there, it doesn't turn on one of our 93 roads. We know that. So probably I'd be, I would guess if I were to develop for some temporary easements with landowners just to get those turbines up there, it's not something you turn on a 93 small type road.
So again, I mean, I suppose if, if a landowner willingly enters into an easement to allow us to do that, yes. But otherwise, the, we, we would submit a road, like a, a transportation plan for the parts that would acknowledge that and already would not, it would probably be untimed landowner land that we would do that. But that would all be in the plan that we would submit to the county.
Sure.
I guess if there's no other questions, I'll just end by saying, when, when we apply for a wind farm to be developed, it is a dialogue with the county. So there is opportunity for the county to weigh in. Yes, based on the ordinance, that matters. But also these concerns that you have on soil, on ecology, that's a moment where you can communicate with us, Judy can talk with us and just make sure that concerns are addressed before approving the application. So it's not, it's not as if you approve this ordinance and then it's a stamp on every wind farm. But I will say, if you approve a two-mile setback, it's certainly a stamp in the negative. It just stops them off the gate.
So what kind of setbacks are considered developer-friendly for winds?
Oh, an honest opinion that I know is not going to be talked about here, 1,300 to 1,500 feet is, is developer-friendly. And frankly, the, the sound requirements usually put us at 1,500 feet anyway. To reach 50 decibels, you've got to, you place the turbine far enough away to hit that decibel number. So they're not, they're not usually independent of each other unless the setback is more restrictive than the sound. So 1,300, 1,500 is what I look for in a setback. We have seen wind farms we build reasonably with 1,800 foot setbacks.
And that's from the property line or from structures?
Thank you. That is from structures. That is not from property. The property line setback that, that is shown to be reasonable is within fall distance or 1.1 times height if you wanted to do slightly more than fall distance.
But clarify reasonable for me, please.
Reasonable, based on?
Reasonable, less than developer-friendly or property or whatever.
Based on precedent, based on precedent and what reasons there would be for setting it farther away from that, that property line. So there's no health, safety and welfare concern would be with setting a turbine than one to 1.1 times the height of the turbine. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, yes, I just have a couple things. I won't keep you longer when you've already been kept or try not to anyway. I had a lot more to say and I didn't realize what the timeline was. But I did want to say that every year since I've been interested in a wind farm, after I got to thinking about our transmission lines, I attend a conference in Lincoln, Nebraska. It's the Wind and Solar Conference. And actually, it takes place this year on the 24th and the 25th. If anybody here is interested in learning a lot more about wind and solar, that's a really good place to get the information and that's where I've gotten mine. I also did want to compliment everyone on their concerns for the sandhills. As I spoke of before, my, that was my dad's passion was his land. So it was always my concern not to hurt the land or the community in any way. And so when I did make up this lease, we spent months. It was my attorney that made up the lease and I made sure I had one with wind experience. And he also made sure to get the disposal clause. Most of the concerns that have been expressed today are in my lease and I was really glad that I did that. The last thing I wanted to say is that about blowouts. Yeah, I think there's a man back there that probably has a lot of experience with blowouts. I can't say it's me, but he does. When they put in those big, huge transmission lines, well, if there's anything that would have caused blowouts that might be similar to a turbine, it was them. And we managed it then. We managed to get those, they managed to get those big towers in there. Every year I get a letter saying they are maintaining them. And so they go in there and they help repair the land of any damage that is caused by the transmission towers. Just wanted to clarify that. I appreciate your time.
I'm sorry to tie now, I have another question. We, we've received a lot of information. I believe this was left at the communicational booth downstairs. Of course, was a report from the Senator. Will, have any of them?
That was an email.
This was printed out?
That was an email, so I printed it out and made copies.
Okay. And so has this been entered in or do they not?
I think that was just for your information.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, enter in. I did email this, had Becky distributed, rather, an e, a letter. I'm going to get up here. This is a technical letter from the Nebraska Game and Parks. I had some questions about wildlife here in Lincoln County, particularly wild and endangered species. And they did send some information there regarding the American baring beetle and the geographically sensitive areas for that particular species in the Lewis Canyons area. They also talked about the interior lease tern, piping clover, the northern long-eared bat, which we've heard about, the fine-scale dake and northern red-bellied dake, the swift fox. There's, there's several things in here. They talked about the migratory birds in Lincoln County being part of the mid-American flyway, particularly with the sandhills and the hooping, hooping cranes and the grouse. And then something for us to consider, while they take a neutral stance on this issue, which I appreciate, they do recommend that there's at least, they request typically one-mile buffer to be maintained between their properties being the several commissioned, commissioned-owned and managed wildlife management areas, state recreation areas and state historical parks that exist in Lincoln County to preserve the conservation and recreation value of those properties. They typically request a one-mile buffer to be maintained between their properties and any wind turbines. That is not what is in our requested regulations. I think it deserves more conversation. So I'm going to enter this letter in for evidence. Had a conversation with our state Senator Mike Jacobson. He unfortunately could not be here today. He has interim study hearings and such in Lincoln, but he did publish an article in The Telegraph as well as The North Platte Olitan on August 8th, 2023, where he summarized his thoughts on the issue that's before us today. I'd like to introduce that article, which provided copies for everybody. And then I know that there's some people that may have a vested interest in potential projects here in Lincoln that don't agree with this survey, but I care about what the people of Lincoln County think. And so I'm going to, again, offer this portion that deals with the wind, power generation and related regulations in as evidence as well. And I'd like to go through that here. Again, in case there's still any confusion about, I was the one that created this, not on behalf of the entire board of the Lincoln County Commissioners, and that it was to be used for my decision-making process, although I would hope that other commissioners would utilize this data as well. Again, the information regarding the survey, 503, 100% completed responses, confidence level of 95%, margin of error of 4.34%. I'm going to rehash this for the sake of time. Question on what do you believe are the most significant benefits of wind power generation for rural Nebraska and Lincoln County? Again, respondents could select all that they thought were applicable. The vast majority stated at 59.76%, none of the above of what was listed there. And they did have an opportunity to put other potential benefits in a free, free response box. Not going to hash the data out. Everybody can see that. And again, it will be part of the official record. Question of what concerns, if any, do you have about wind power generation projects in rural Nebraska and Lincoln County? Select all that apply. The data is slightly stronger than what we saw for the solar power generation. A lot more interest in this. It appears to be based off the responses, 73.35% had concerns with visual impact on the landscape. Next notable is the impact on wildlife. We have a letter that has been entered into evidence regarding the vast amount of wildlife and endangered, at-risk species that we have in Lincoln County. I'm not going to hash through all of those. Again, everybody has a copy of this, these results for them to review and it will be part of the official record. Do you believe that wind power generation projects will have a positive or negative impact on the local economy in rural Nebraska and Lincoln County? The results of this, we had collectively some level of positive response at 18.6%, 9.4% being in the neutral, and in overwhelming some degree or another, a negative view at 70.2%. Only 1.8% were unsure. Went through and I listed the current setbacks as well as what has been proposed. I would note here, the minimum of 600 feet from public conservation lands, including wild management areas, state recreation areas, a minimum of 600 feet from wetlands, USFW types three, four and five. Again, that letter that we received from Nebraska Game and Parks, they recommend adjusting to one mile. Question, related to that information on the previous slide, do you believe that the existing setbacks prior to the recommended changes are adequate and appropriate? 12.83% said yes. An overwhelming 72.95% said no, they were not appropriate or adequate. 14.23% were unsure. Next question, related, do you believe that the recommended changes of the previously, that were previously mentioned are adequate and appropriate? Surprisingly, 18.75% said yes, they were. 59.27% said no. 21.98% were unsure. Third follow-on question to that information, do you believe that setbacks for wind power generating turbines need to be more stringent than the recommended changes? Substantial, 67.81% of respondents representing Lincoln County said yes, they do need to be. 15.49% said no, 16.7% were unsure. When it comes to the individual property rights, which has been bantered about on numerous occasions here today, how should consideration be given to the landowner considering placing wind turbines on their property, being person one, versus neighbors and or the general public who may not desire a wind turbine in close proximity to their own property, being person two? You can see there that the data shows that 15.48% say much more to person one, 9.57% somewhat more to person one, 28, 28.92% saying equal to both persons, 8.55% somewhat, somewhat more to person two, and a larger percentage out of all of them, 30.96% much more to person two, with 6.52% being unsure.
Do I, I want to understand that well.
Sure.
So person two is somebody, a neighbor?
Neighbor and or general public who may not desire a wind turbine in close proximity to their own property.
So that chart tells me that the majority of people in this survey think that more consideration should be given to a neighbor than the landowner, right?
A neighbor who may not desire a wind turbine and the general public. You calculate and add both somewhat more and much more to person two. You tie in equal to both persons. I mean, the, the data is what the data is. I'll let you extrapolate what you want. Pretty significant question right here. Overall, do you support or oppose potential large-scale wind power generation projects developing in Lincoln County, Nebraska? To summarize this collectively, out of the varying levels of support, only 16.44% support large-scale wind power generation projects developing in Lincoln County. Only 2.1%. Only 2.2% were neutral on this topic. The vast majority of some degree of opposition was at 80.96% of respondents representing statistically Lincoln County, being in opposition to large-scale wind power generation projects developing in Lincoln County. 0.4% being unsure.
Does your survey show where people live? I think you have a slide there. So most of the people with strong opinions about opposing rural landowners being able to develop their property. Most of those votes came from people that lived within the city limits?
49.4% were in the city of North Platte. 9.9% in Southland, 2.2 in Hershey, 0.4 in Wallace. We had no respondents from the village of Wolfbeet. 1.6% from Maxwell, 1% from Brady. Pre-presounding, 33.3% of rural Lincoln County residents. And then 3% being remote landowners who live outside of the county but own land.
And there's a slide in there for that person, is that right?
There is, it is right after the survey.
Nope, I thought I saw. That's, oh, but please identify where you're from. And so this bar is people inside North Platte city limits that participate in the survey.
As is.
Mr. Chairman, before, okay, before someone else challenges the party, would you please accept the use of the document? I would accept all of the facilities that you have received. That's all, now, now I'm in the way.
Mr. Chairman, I move to closing comments here.
I have a motion, any second to close the public hearing. Any discussion?
I believe that the study from the Center for Rural Affairs should be submitted to. I have not had time to read every, but it looks like there's a lot of very good information in it that should be considered.
If you can bring that report, I would accept that in your actions as well.
Any other discussion? I would just say, and I thought to leave it all my colleagues, for you, you know, as we do appreciate strong public participation in the public hearing. It's great to see civic engagement. Whatever side of the spectrum you're on, we appreciate all the comments because it does help us with our decision. And thank you for being and taking the time under your discretion.
I would like to play off of that for Judy and her other member, planning and zoning commission. I know that there's been a lot of discussion and a lot of research and good recommendations put forth. And I look forward to having another session. And I feel like today I have really gotten a lot of answers to some of my questions, but I still need to pour over this and you may have more questions waiting for me.
We have a motion, a second and any other discussion? I would act on my colleagues from the standpoint that everyone behaved very nicely. Very appreciative of that. Appreciating all of the input. If you ever signed with the study you happen to resign on now, I appreciate the information that's been sent to us today. Any other discussion? Motion, a second to close the public hearing. Provo, please.
Brans.
All right.
Nina.
Hi, Judy.
All right.
Queens.
All right.
Mary.
Hi. Okay, our next, we would consider an action in regards to the resolution for amendment to the Lincoln County Nebraska. Tell me where regulations have been dropped and what, if any, much likely would be the other regulations that were from the last period. I have not prepared a resolution. I suspect there would be an out type of report to actually pass those, they would be a lot of information that was given. Again, I would ask for some, if it matters, some kind of consensus on what I. Okay, the previous public hearing, we established that we were in a one-week session after a regular meeting for the next month. Is that the idea that might apply to this article as well?
I believe I does.
I think that we probably tied it together. I don't know, probably spend the whole session with the same video of the number seven.
Judy, you're on board, what happens?
Thank you.
I have to go as well.
Motion for that. Okay, Judy, the chairman, I move that we table a decision on this. So we have time to review the marginality of information we received and if that's going to provide and potentially alter regulations that have been recommended one way or the other. And for that order to be done during work sessions in conjunction with the solar regulations, commencing at the end of normal business on our regular meetings, up until we make a decision on this topic, obviously.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Provo, please.
Brans.
All right.
Well, there's, Judy.
All right.
Queens.
All right.
Laura.
All right. Judy, do you have a company name or use?
I'll leave it.
You.
About next item on our agenda, do we need a closed session? Good. Okay, last item on our agenda is your concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives, and we will keep the meeting open as we finish the.
But you need to clarify that, that it was.
Becky, you got the one which we already said you know?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
No, there is.
Glad we can like you.
Gentlemen, did you guys, ladies, did you pick up a sheet before the sheet that's on here? Thank you. It's just the solar. Okay, this, yeah, it starts.
I think, no, that's why I have. We have more, yes.
Yeah, this one, I think I had the name better. Mark, his sister, she touched him.
I care.
That was hate. P A P E, I'd say. It's not.
No, there's an, there's an issue.
I don't think he's.
No. He has a problem.
That's Mark. We had a good deputy of his, equal-eyed.
Yeah, this is the guy's. I will, anybody else wants to say that gentleman is maybe not that, I mean, she's.
Popular, Greenie County.
Yeah, it's Paul, it's Oscar, Burt.
Burt.
D E R N T E. So if they do.
Or the place is the last one.
Just say like three.
You can see.
If you're like me, sometimes you have to have to decide who the society gets in. All right. We missed one every time, for sure.
For sure, you have another true.
Yeah, we have it tomorrow, so we can do it at five o'clock.
We won't, we won't argue from the beginning.
And a lot of the second. That's a, that's a copy deadline, usually that page is.
Good night.
I wanna find.
Would be live stream.
Yes, we do. We do not the first one, we have a couple of classes, we want to.
Okay.
So I like the rest of it.
I just, after what I said during the meeting, I feel like this is such a controversial topic that we parents can't handle. I mean, I feel it's pretty much, but I don't want to.
Is there anything else? Is there any other business that could come before the, would you get on board for you?
I usually, like, without howl or architect.
Julie, or, hey, do you have anything?
Leadership. Would you like to take a call?
What is it?
Yeah, do we have fun?
They just want to sign off for it's done. Is that what you're asking, sign off?
Sign off when it's completed.
So.
I mean, there's all those questions.
That paper's very, we use that for the H M.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
You sign off on it?
Absolutely.
No, with the chairman needs to sign it?
Okay.
Whoever's in charge of filling it out, saying what's done, it's good, but the chairman needs to.
So the architect or the general contractor?
Is it architect?
Architect. Architect, okay. So it goes to architect first and then he brings it to you? And then do we turn it back on you?
I mean, it'll go back to Paul, it can be good for you.
Yes.
I have a last paper here, I want to.
Yes. I found that, right? Yeah.
Actually, I think that's.
All right, you have it? Okay. Becky, do you have anything, well, for the, for the one? Okay, so at